convene the Newburgh City Council work session for November 7, 2016. Not appearing any other agenda items you want any clarification on? And council business, anything to add to council business? Council Johnson?
I'll have something during the meeting. I attended a Economic Development Small Grant Program presentation on, I think that was Monday, and wanted to just give a little report.
Thank you. Anybody else? Council Resson?
Did you want to talk a little bit about what we?
You certainly may.
I may?
You may.
It'll be very little bit.
Whether you like it or not. Anybody else? Very good. All right, with that, is Mr. Zuck available? And you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for inviting me here this evening. I'm excited to be able to give you an update on the long-range financial plan. And we've been busy at work with it. I've got a little presentation that's in your packet, but I'll go over this as well on slides.
Matt, turn it on.
Thank you. So just as a matter of recap, you'll recall that the Council set the strategic priority back on January 4th of 2016, and that was to establish within an 18- to 24-month period, a five-year financial plan to guide the long-term health of the city, and then also to look at the financial policies, specifically the use of debt and preservation of fund balances. And so, I gave an overview back in August and had a little bit more detail on that. One of the aspects of that piece of the long-range financial plan was to bring a committee together, an ad hoc committee. And I, it's been a real joy to be with that committee. We've had four meetings out of six, and I wanted to provide for you a list of the members that have joined us for that. Again, the purpose was to help us draft the financial policies, then kind of to vet the process, as well as some of the results. So, you can see the list here. Council McKinney, Kathy Try, who is a familiar name around the city, and Scott Carn from First Federal, who he deals with commercial loans and has asked some really good questions regarding city finances. Rick Rogers, who is another familiar face, Citizens Rate Review Committee. Gwen Gardner from the Newburgh School District, who, you know, is a counterpart to me here, and a little bit different environment at the school district, but deals with the same needs that the city does. Shannon Montoya, who originally started with the city of Salem, and then during the process of our committee, received an offer to join the city of Woodburn. And she's been a real big help. She's been in a bigger city and has done the long-range financial planning there and been real instrumental. So, then of course, you've got the ex-official members and staff. So, like I said, we've had a couple, we've had four meetings, two in September, two October. We started out looking at the financial policies that the city had on board from 2014 to 2015. And I spent some time looking at best practice from other cities and the General, or the Government Finance Officers Association, and just reviewing those, making recommendations. And then over the course of the first three meetings, we really went over those, you know, line by line, word by word, and got some input that was really valuable about what, where the city's policy needed to be shored up, some additional information. For example, we spent some time clarifying some definitions that commonly come up in the Budget Committee discussions, like, what does fund balance mean? Does that mean contingency? Does it mean reserves? Does it mean inappropriate any fund balance? And having heard that, okay, that's been a, you know, area of confusion for a while, well, let's put it in the policy and make it clear. And then, you know, we're talking about fund balance. Each fund has a different need, and found out that really what we want to do is take our fund balance targets and reflect those in the financial plan, but also in the annual budget, so that when we come to the Budget Committee process, they have an idea of what our policies are, and how the budget ties in with that. So, you can see here, this is the list of the financial policies that we have looked at. And after three meetings, we've gone through all the policies, and we're going to come back on the final meeting and make a recommendation on that. And of course, the process is an annual process, so we'll have another opportunity to look at these year over year. So, if we miss something this first year, we'll certainly be able to pick it up and catch that the next year, or mid-year. So, the next, the fourth meeting that we had was looking at a few long-range financial plans from a few other cities. We looked at the city of Happy Valley and the city of Woodburn, and just really kind of got an idea of, you know, this is not a template, a cookie cutter, that you can just, you know, go to the state or go to another city and just buy and fill in the blanks. It's really an opportunity to create your own plan. So we looked at various levels of detail in that plan. You know, some plans just had graphical information, some had, you know, a financial plan in the form of dollars. And it was really some good feedback about where do we want to land as far as how much detail we want to put into that plan. Caleb and I are actively building a model for how do we do this? Back in August, I talked to you about, okay, we had an opportunity to maybe buy some software that would help with this, or develop it in-house. And what we're, where we've landed is that, you know, we have a template for how we build the budget every year. We're using that one and taking it out five years, so essentially, it makes the budget process and the long-range financial process integrated. It's much more custom for what we're doing. So, we're really emphasizing the communication of our assumptions. There's a lot of little assumptions that go into every line, if you will, but, you know, we're going to pick the highlights, you know, things like, you know, property tax assumptions, COLA, cost of living adjustments, salaries, et cetera, and make those transparent. And then, like I said, connecting the policies to the plan. Doesn't do any good to have a policy on fund balance, but then not be able to see that when you're looking at the plan or looking at the budget. So, we have two more meetings coming up in the process, one in November, one in December, and we're going to continue to look at that, the financial plan, and then come back to you in January at a work session and discuss the plan, give you guys an opportunity to see it, get any feedback, questions from you, and then hopefully have that approved at the second meeting in January. And then from there, like I said, we'll roll into the annual budget process. So, in conclusion, it's, like I said, it's been a really enjoyable process getting feedback, especially from the committee, from folks that are both practitioners, and then folks that have never really looked at city finances before, but looked at finances in general, like, say, a guy like Scott Carn, you know, has looked at construction loans and those sorts of things, asking great questions. And, you know, all those meetings are transparent, they're recorded, they're working with Colin to help, you know, get that word out, and it's been really good. So, we're excited about the process, and I'm really excited about the policies getting strengthened, you know, in the future, when we have an opportunity to potentially refinance or go out to debt, or have a credit rating agency look at us. You know, I'm going to be in a better position than I was in 2015, when we refunded the $11 million, to be able to hand a policy and say, hey, we had this vetted by citizens, we had it vetted by council, we freshened it up. Not only is it strong management, but it's documented so that in the event that we have turnover, hey, these are the policies, and here's how we're adhering to them. So, that is my update, and I will turn it back over to you, Mayor.
I thank you. I'm going to comment, make an initial comment on this. It's been very rewarding to see that we're beginning to move in this area, and then some other areas, but we're beginning to move in areas where we're fulfilling our initial goals that we had set forth. And I want to thank the staff and the committee for delving into this. It's been educational, it's been insightful, both, as we have, and I think the product that committee is going to be bringing to you will definitely be worth the time that they've spent and worth your time reviewing. So, any questions or comments from the council? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
It's been a good, a good march from here. Thank you. I have a request for public comment, but I'm going to move that up, if I may, and I'm going to ask Krista Eberle to, is that right?
Krista Eberle.
Eberle, I blew that one. Anyway, would you come forward? And I think you have a message for us regarding the Newburgh Animal Shelter. Thank you.
Okay, so, is it okay if I stand? Okay, all right. You can do whatever you want to stand. I gave you each an informational packet, so I wanted to point that out, and we'll kind of walk through some of the details that we have in those packets. The first two are just a brochure and some information on spay and neuter for cats. Those are just takeaway items for you to have and read later. We'll start with the first page here with the pictures, and I'll introduce myself. So my name is Krista Eberle, and I serve as Board President for the Newburgh Animal Shelter. We have been working very hard over the last couple of years, since the city asked us to take over running the shelter operations, and we're here today to give you an update on how things are going. So, the first, the first page here, I just thought I'd start with why we're really here, actually. It's pictures of some of the animals that we've adopted out, and some comments about how, you know, individuals in the community are very happy, this brings them joy, and this is a good thing that we're doing for the community. So, when it really comes down to it, with all the hard work and sometimes the heartbreak that we go through at the shelter, this is what it comes down to for us, when the community reaches back out and says, hey, thank you, this is really wonderful work that you're doing. So, just sharing. Okay, so on the second page, this is really the bulk of what we'll talk about today, and I just wanted to give you guys an update of how we're doing and how things are going at the shelter. So, as of the end of September, talking to adoptions at this point, we've adopted out 244 animals. And since we initially started the contract with the city of Newburgh to take over operations, we're nearly 400. So, we're a small operation, but we're doing, we're doing really good. We, last year, one of the things that we worked really hard on was putting together projections, because the, the more animals you adopt, the more vet bills you have, the more fundraising you have to do, right? So we have to be prepared financially and from an event planning standpoint to manage additional adoption. So, we put forth the goal and the fundraising to back up that goal of a 20% growth rate year over year. And as you can see from the numbers, we're kind of blowing that out of the water, so...
Can I ask them?
Yeah.
A set of animals, 244, dogs, cats, can you break that down, please?
Dogs and cats.
Can you break it down to?
I do have that number. I don't have it here, so I can get that to you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, one of the things that we are doing again at the end of this year is projecting out the needs of the community. And what we've seen so far in the past two years is that there's just really a strong desire and need for, for people in the community. And let me explain that a little bit further. So, what we do is we take in surrendered animals, for the most part. We do adopt out some strays from the county as well. But the bulk of what we, what we have at the shelter are animals that people in the community are unable to care for any longer. And when you see it from the inside, it's really not what you would expect. These are, these are people who have been displaced from their homes, people who have lost their jobs, people who have to move, who have a family member who has passed away, an elderly person who can no longer care for their pet. So, these are really heartfelt stories that we're privy to, and I think it really demonstrates, at least to me, from my perspective, the great need that our community has to have a place for people to go and to have their pets land in a shelter that they know they'll be taken care of. So, for me, that's where the passion comes from. We really want to help our community and doing that through helping their animals. So, if we take a look at animals on site, we have, as of 10/23 of this year, we have 53 cats and 13 dogs, and that's a pretty typical run rate. We have more kittens in the summer, of course. Prior to adoption, all the animals are spayed and neutered, spayed or neutered, vaccinated, dogs are microchipped, and they receive all the medical care that they need to be healthy prior to adoption. We do occasionally take in special needs animals that require additional training, but our resources are kind of limited for that. When we think about what it takes to rent a shelter, it's quite, it's quite astounding to me, actually, when we break it down. If we look at our volunteer staffing, we have 48 volunteers right now. We have 23 who are active and dedicated, and that includes six lead volunteers that do most of the training. And what, what we denote as an active dedicated volunteer is someone who commits to one shift per week, so that's about three to four hours a week. When you look at, when you do the math on this, this is the man-hours that we need to have minimum, minimum staffing. This is feeding and caring for the animals, is 18 hours a day and 126 hours a week. So, there's a lot going on down there. On average, we have about 11 hours a day staffed. So what that means is there's volunteers carrying an extra weight, which is, which we're happy to do, right? We also have two full-time employees. We have a shelter manager and a kennel technician, and these two individuals are fantastic and carry a huge workload for the shelter. So they pick up the slack where we don't have volunteers to cover it. One of the items that we have been working on really hard, because it's very important to us that all of the, anyone who fills out an application to volunteer at the shelter receives a response and is processed accurately. So we did receive community feedback that applications were getting lost. So, that is horrible, and we take full responsibility for that. So, what I have recommended and what we have now implemented at the shelter is a digital tracking system. So all of our applications are now online, and we have a traceability through the system. So we can trace who applied, when they were responded to, we have a full circle there. So I feel good about that, and we'll keep track of that moving forward. Yamhill County Dog Control. We have worked really closely with the county over the last two years, and I feel like we have a great working relationship with them. I really appreciate all of the work that they do. They're in and out of the shelter on a regular basis, helping us with, with strays and helping to find, find the homes of strays that come in. We keep two kennels, dog kennels, of course, open at all times for either the city of Newburgh Police to come in. They all have access badges to access the shelter. So if there's an accident or an animal that's displaced in some way, the officers all have access, and they can bring that animal, and we will take care of that animal until we have, you know, a good place for them to go. Same for Yamhill County Dog Control. So if there's a citizen who brings an animal, a dog, not a cat, a dog, in, to our shelter, or if the county officer finds a stray, we have a place for them in Newburgh. So they stay with us, they don't have to bounce back and forth, and then our shelter manager works with the Yamhill County Dog Control to ensure that the proper owner is found, that the proper paperwork is filled out before we release that dog to the owner. So, so far this year, we've processed 48 strays through the shelter. Most of those found their home, and then we've also been able to offload some of the, some of the dogs that the county is weighted with, and they've transferred over 21 dogs for us that we've been able to adopt out. So these are dogs where the owners were unable to be found, or the owners surrendered to the county.
Before you go any further, I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I go back up to your animals on site? And they're looking at the, and I'm looking at the, your, prior to adoption, all animals are spayed or neutered, vaccinated. How much of that, how much of the cost of that is being donated?
Well, all of it.
By, by the specialists, the veterinaries?
Oh, oh, no, no. So we fundraise for all of that cost, and we work with...
So it's coming out of your fundraising?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
And the second one I have is the dog licensing at the shelter.
Yeah.
Is there any sharing of the cost to process those licenses by the county?
It's very, very minimal. There's really no cost to us. So we, we get a dollar per license. So that's, that's, that's the same situation that a vet would have. So the vets that process through their facilities were set up exactly the same.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have one question.
You have, Council Bacon?
How much do you, how much do you charge, if I come to you to adopt a dog, what, what's the charge for me?
That varies by animal.
Okay.
It's a very good question. So as you can imagine, puppies are more expensive, older dogs are less expensive, kittens are, you know, more expensive. So it, it varies a great deal. But we do, one of the things that we, we keep a good pulse on is, I hate to use these terms, but the going rate. And we keep ours lower than around.
So like, the one in Tigard is like $240 or something to...
Yeah. We try to keep our rates a little lower. In some cases, we can't, because we've put in significant medical expenses into a particular animal, things like that. So, it just, it varies a great deal.
Follow on? And then that money goes back into treating? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, more questions?
Go ahead.
Okay, great, thank you. Good questions. So let's talk about fundraising a little bit. One of the things that we had this year was a matching fund from Ken Austin, which was just fantastic that he offered to do that. So, he had a passion to having the HVAC system installed in the shelter, and we raised $15,000 towards that, and then Ken matched the other half. So, we have the goal achieved, and we have the engineering plans approved, and the purchase order is released. So hopefully, the start date will happen soon. You know how these things go. So, that was a huge goal for us this year, and we're very pleased for the community support on that. When we took over operating the shelter, one of the things that the board talked about a great deal is, we really want to do the best job we can with this, and we have learned a tremendous amount. One of the first things that we did as, as kind of an operational board, was we went and met with Oregon Humane Society. And we sat down with their executive director and their operations director, and they really helped us put a plan in place. And they've been partners with us the whole way, and have been a wonderful resource for us, along with a lot of other shelters in the area. So, so a lot of what we have modeled ourselves after, what we strive to do, is based on really trying to be the best for our community. On that note, there is a new consultation program that Oregon Humane Society has started just now, and we're on the schedule. And what this is, is it's a consultant that comes out to the facility, spends five full working days next to us, elbow to elbow, and gives us a full assessment, how are we doing? And the list is long. So, we're, we welcome it, right? We welcome the feedback, and I'm very excited that we have the opportunity to have, you know, real professional with 20 years' experience at the shelter telling us, you know, where we need to plug some holes and where we're doing okay. So, keep you posted on that. Questions before I move on?
Council Bacon?
I just want to say, the last time that I asked for the animal shelter to come here and talk to us, I was pretty hard on y'all. And from getting the feedback from the community about people applying to be volunteers and no one ever calling them back, and the animals from Newburgh going to McMinnville, so I want to say that I am really, really pleased to see that this has moved forward, because there, there is nothing more important to me than dogs. I mean, anyone who knows me knows that. I love my dogs more than I love people most of the time. And it's very important to me, and I'm very glad to see that this has moved forward and that you're doing a great job, and I'm glad that I don't have to be upset anymore. So thank you so, 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 so much.
Thank you very much. And I also want to thank you for your feedback, because, you know, sometimes we are unaware of these things until we hear that feedback. So that's so important to us, so thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, I'll keep going.
Excuse us, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
Council Resson?
I just wanted to say that I'm also very supportive. As a matter of fact, my wife has it in our budget that we will donate to this as one of our charities every month.
Thank you.
And our dog, Bridget, is a member of the family, and so we are very concerned that you guys stick around, because I think it's a really important thing, and I'm really pleased that you're doing it, that you're, you're surviving. One of the things I would like to suggest is, you had a request for kitty food, and, but you're only open just a few hours. Would there be a place that you could have some kind of a kitty door that we could stick the kitty food in instead of having to figure out what time you're...
That's a good idea.
Because I went back three or four times, and I don't know if the kitties were gone by the time I got it in there.
Okay.
But we went down and bought the kitty food, and we finally got it to you, but your restricted hours make it where you have to make sure you're scheduled to get it there right at that time, so that we can give you what you want. Now, we already donated, and you get it in the mail, but that was a special request because you had some kitties, I guess.
Yeah.
So I'd like to see if you could do that.
That's a great idea. That's great feedback. One of the things to note is there's always volunteers there in the morning from 8:00 to noon about, and then in the evening, again, from about 4:00 to 6:00. So even though we're not open, if you knock on the door, we'll probably come and open it up for you. But we're usually in the back, because we're with the animals.
Good thing to know.
Yeah. Don't tell too many people, though. Okay.
Oops.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay, so the last piece here is, the last page is on the, our mission statement and our values, actually, the third page. So, just a reiteration here, we are a no-kill shelter, and we do work to provide a caring environment for the animals. So, we're small, and that allows us the luxury of being able to do that. So we have, you know, volunteers that are loving on the animals, walking in, running in, doing everything we can to make sure that they really have a good transition. And that's, that's just incredibly important to us. So every decision that we make, we look at our values. And the number one there is animal care is our top priority. So, you know, this is one of the recommendations that the Humane Society had for us when we sat down, is set your values. Because when you have a discussion about something and there's disagreement, you go to your values, right? And you can, you can say, nope, number one is animal care. So, that to us is important, and I believe it's important for the city to understand that that's where our heart is, and that's, you know, our mission and our values. So I've listed the Board of Directors here, just so that you know who the folks are, and you may know some of these familiar faces. And I also wanted to let you know that we are seeking to increase our board as we have grown and as we have learned over the last... Uh, as we have grown and as we have learned over the last couple of years, there are new skills that we need to be successful and to continue to grow and to continue to thrive. So we are seeking, uh, professionals with experience in grant writing, public relations, nonprofit, and event planning. So our board elections are at the end of the year as, as normal, and if you guys have any, anyone interested, please let me know. And then one of the, the last things that I'll leave you with is, we've been talking a lot about, so the last two years have been, let's make sure this is a real business and that we can, you know, be fruitful and be here for the long haul. I think we're there. Now we're talking about, okay, what do we look like in five years? What do we look like in ten years? What does our community need in that timeframe? How can we meet those needs? Um, what skills do we need? How many employees do we need? How many volunteers do we need? The list goes on and on. So these are some of the conversations that we're having, and we'll, um, I would love to have city council feedback on that. I would love to have community feedback on that, um, so that we make sure that we make a well-rounded plan for the long run. Um, and that is all I had. The last page is just volunteer job descriptions for you to have an idea of opportunities in case you know someone interested.
I'd like to come back to one of the statements you made up here earlier. We improve the quality of life for sheltered animals, and we, we provide a, a pet food bank for those in need. How do you manage that?
So all of our food is donated. Um, all of our pet food is donated. We have a yearly pet food drive. Actually, it's, it just kicked off, and, um, you'll see pet food big bins in Wilco and Cruder Cabana and other places around town, and then we do it virtually online. Um, that literally meets most of our food needs for, throughout the year, and we often have excess. So we give that food to Fish, and we package it up, and-
You do it through Fish, you said?
Yes.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for.
We package it up.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we'd love to do more.
Good. That was what I was, was thinking.
Part of our long-range planning, we, we've had a lot of discussions on how we can partner with YCAP. Um, you know, the homeless community really, uh, pulls at our heartstrings, and that's really an area where we think we can do more. Um, we just need to scope that out.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate all your support and the time tonight.
Vice Chair Bacon, I sincerely appreciate you coming in and giving us an update. I think it's very important, very practical, and very informative. Thank you.
Vet, I'm happy to come by any time and come by the shelter.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you for the information. Anything else to come before us at this time and work session? We have a couple of things on the, um, a little bit of time on our council business. So I'm going to work my way back into this. Patrick, you wanted to talk about economic development?
Yeah, uh, yes, sir. I was hoping to have a little time to prepare something, but that's okay. We'll, we'll muddle through.
How much time?
Yeah, well, nah, a couple minutes, but that's okay. I'll, I'll, I'll muddle through. So last Wednesday on, uh, November second, made a trip down to McMinnville at the four, four-something, uh, print shop. It's a print shop. And, uh, Vice Chair Primovich was there, uh, handing out, uh, economic development grants. And this is a program that I learned about, uh, Wednesday night. And, um, basically, businesses can apply from between January and March first, um, and the funding is limited to ten thousand dollars or less per business. And, uh, it's economic development grant money through the Oregon Lottery. And so, um, yeah, so, kind of cool. And, um, it was really neat seeing these small businesses, and, and they had success stories. And, um, so just to let you know, between January and March, um, next year, I'm probably going to be, uh, pushing on this pretty hard to make sure that we get some Newburgh people out there because I saw a lot of businesses from McMinnville in Dundee, and they didn't give me a list, but, um, I, I didn't see any from Newburgh. So, um, you know, I'm hoping that we can get the word out and hopefully have some Newburgh businesses. I know that the county has given grow grants to the community center and in some other places here in town, um, but this year, they, they didn't. So, you know, I think it's just a lack of people knowing about the program. So anyway, it was a really cool evening. Commissioner Starrett was there, and, um, you know, a lot of economic development people. So just out there planting the flag for us and, and, uh, you know, having fun. So that's all I had.
Any questions or comments for, um, Patrick? Thank you. Appreciate you making that, and continue. The recorder, Sue sent out a, a memo to the council regarding, um, a training session on elected essentials. How many of you are interested in this? Have you seen the full schedule of where the various meetings are? And if you haven't thought about it, I would encourage you to think about it. Those particularly that are, have had, are fairly new to the council, uh, any new members of the council, and unfortunately, as Sue noted, the one that is probably most convenient for us is over in Happy Valley on the schedule. And this is on January fifth. So that would be Wednesday, that'd be a Thursday, wouldn't it? And, um, I'd like to have you seriously consider it, particularly those that have are short, have a short duration or have been on the council just a short time. And it is open to those that have been elected for some time, but it is especially encouraged for those that are new to the council. So Happy Valley, January fifth, and Sue has the details on that. So I would really encourage you to look at that very seriously.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
There is no cost. It's part of your League of Oregon City's membership, so it is a free class.
And we can provide carpooling.
Correct.
We'll answer that one, too. And they provide a lunch? So the meal will be there. It, uh, as, if you read through the, the information on it, the program is, um, it's an awful small print, but I'll try it here. It starts at nine thirty with welcoming and introductions and coffee. There's a lunch, and then it concludes at four fifteen for the elected essentials. Then at four thirty, there is a regional meeting, which will provide with a legislative update. And then there's a roundtable discussion, which is rather interesting, and the total program concludes at six thirty. But you're welcome to leave if you need at four fifteen, but I think you'll find that those legislative updates and kind of hear what's going on in some of the other communities can be rather interesting. So that's it. It's on the calendar, if you want it. We can make more copies if you don't have a calendar available. So that's that particular one that I wanted for you. I have another one, if I may. There is a ribbon cutting for the new location of our chamber on, um, Portland Road, or actually, it's a Hewlett Street, I think, a Sue Hewlett Street address, I believe, it may not be. But it is being requested that we have at least the council president there, and they would like to have the chief of police, so if you'd pass that message on. They would love to have the city manager and the city attorney, and, um, if we could pass the message on for either our local, um, TVFNR administrator, or at least the PIO for TVFNR. Say what?
What's the date?
Oh, the date, November, uh, uh, eighteen. It's Friday the eighteenth.
Time?
Oh, eight hundred.
Greeters?
It's greeters. It's at greeters. There you go.
Got it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So with that, unless there's something else, there's a couple of other items, but we'll, I'll defer those to a little bit later. Um, how long do you want to do your report, Scott?
Oh, I don't remember.
Okay, well, go ahead. This, this is one that's, well, Scott and I, uh, participated in, and with time permitting, I may tag with it along with Scott. So go ahead, Scott.
Sure. All right. My mic's out. Two seconds. Oh, there we go. All right. Uh, and then my boss is, uh-
Here.
Your mic, please.
Okay, the mayor and I, let me get it taken a little closer to this stuff. The mayor and I, um, attended a faith leadership conference, and that was at the Portland Convention Center.
May I qualify that a little bit more? It was emergency preparedness, faith leadership.
Right. Yeah. It was, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it was. And, um, it was primarily, uh, it was a day-long conference, so I think we got out of there about four thirty. Um, but in the morning, we, uh, talked about, um, we had a presentation by Dr. Jody Kiri Costa, and, uh, she talked to the, it was primarily to, uh, church. And the churches there were primarily, it seemed like, from Portland, but they were from various areas. I think we had one from McMinnville. And, um, the mayor was introduced, and, uh, uh, they were really pleased to find out that we were doing this same thing that they were, they were doing. But basically, going over what we, the first session basically went over what we know was going to happen, what could happen in an emergency, and how that the churches would be involved in it. And, uh, uh, that was very good. We then broke for lunch, and, uh, uh, there was a show, and all the different, uh, uh, basically, uh, kind of emergency preparedness things that you could think about having, uh, were there, and all the different vendors. So I picked up all the information, and I thought I'd meet with Joe at some point and ask if any of it should be passed on to the rest of the council, or if he wanted any of it. The main thing that I picked up, that I thought was really valuable, is they had, uh, a website that they gave us, which was ready.gov. And, um, that website, if you go to it, gives you all the different agencies that, uh, you may want to contact. So, and it's easy to remember, ready.gov. And the second thing they had was a app called Next Door, and you just go to nextdoor.com. I joined that app, and it had ninety of my neighbors already on board. It was called the Greens. But it also included other neighborhoods, and it's all the different neighborhoods, uh, around your area, and people that sign up, and they basically give, you know, what, who they are, and there's a lot of information. So I can use that for my, the Greens neighborhood to end up with, uh, a listing of all the neighbors. It's not complete. I think there's like ninety people on there, and there's three hundred in our neighborhood that are right in the Greens already, that already belong to it. So it's just going to be a matter of going on there and, uh, introducing them to what my program is, uh, as the emergency preparedness program. And as I told the mayor, I've been working with, uh, Don Clements, and he's already agreed to store a trailer, and we're still trying to come up with the trailer and what it's going to, going to be, but we think we're going to be able to get a trailer with, uh, a triage and all kinds of things that, uh, he'll also store our, our water pump and all that stuff. And then I'll be trying to meet with the, with the college, because as you know, we have no church in the Greens area. So, um, uh, I'll be meeting with, uh, with the junior college because they would be a good place for us to shelter, uh, people in the event of a, of a major emergency. So I, I've kind of taken what I learned there and tried to move forward. But we'll want to do this citywide, and I guess you may want to know a little bit about what that was about. I haven't had a chance to meet with, uh, with anybody, uh, I went, I guess it was Tuesday? I think it was, the second was Tuesday, uh, and, uh, Wednesday I went in and, and they tried to cut off my nose. It's a, uh, a carcinoma, but, uh, you, I say that is because we're talking about safety, uh, use your sunscreen. All you youngsters and that. And I don't know, the second part of that, uh, event was an afternoon, uh, session, which went into, and there was a, uh, grief and trauma care, uh, before, during and before, and, and after an emergency, and that was presented by Dr. Norman Wright. And, uh, he talked about all of the, what's going to happen as far as trauma, what you need to do with people, and gave us, um, a basic training, and it was mostly for the churches, how to deal with people after, after a trauma event. So, uh, and that was primarily for the churches, but this is some of the training that we're going to have to look forward to, uh, as we get more into this event, uh, to the emergency preparedness program. So I don't know, what else could, uh, we talk about?
Oh, a couple of things I want to add to that. Good report. Thank you. Appreciate it. One of the things that came out that I think is, fits in with where we want to be tomorrow, and that is that as, as you're looking at, at disaster, you have two pieces to that. You have disaster preparedness, and then you have recovery. So you have both sides, and, and what, where are you? One of the things that came out that was articulated by the faith community was, we know our congregations as the pastor, the rabbi, the minister, whatever it is. We know our congregations. We know what we have. Don't tell us what to do. We're looking to you, the city, you, the government, as a resource. We know our people. We work with them day in, day out, most of the time. And so we have a better idea of what they are. We know what our resources are. We're looking to look to you as a resource, not as an authoritarian body. And that was a, was an interesting message that they fed back that, uh, I think we need to be sensitive to. With that, it was, it was a good meeting. The, um, the afternoon session was, was, I think, poignant, and it, it helped us. It helped, sure it'll help Scott, and it'll help me in being at least receptive to what's going on as we look at the, the area of, of trauma that is, that is associated with the disaster and shows itself during the recovery period. And we need to be sensitive to that also. So thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, uh, the staff for bringing it to our attention. Is there anything else to come before the council at this time? I think we will then count, uh, close the work session, and we'll be in recess until approximately seven P.M.
Remember that cute guy?
For heaven's sakes.
Wearing his old Mary Stern shirt.
That is cute.
He has a chain he just hasn't used.
Oh, my goodness.
Did you see him last Saturday?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Updates, recognizing the agenda tonight, I'll just go through about five of the highlights and then I'll email you and the press, just the summary of all of the stuff because there's been quite a bit that's happened over the last month. In the five, spent the better part of two weeks working with George Fox on individual departments, music department, civil engineering with Jay Harris and the archivists, and working on what will be a proposal to them to look at internships and new partnerships and some that can be kind of exciting. For example, the concept is to use students from the time they're freshmen all the way up through seniors in working at different phases, whether it's in hard sciences, chemistry at the plants, to creating the new and best solution for treatments of our roads. So there'll be more to come back. Archivists, we look to helping with historic preservation and then ideally a planning intern with affordable housing. Also met with in the audience tonight is Brian Stewart, but met with the Camellia Association of Oregon. This is in advance of both your action or request tonight for us to declare Newburgh as the Camellia City, but it's also looking forward to the International Festival in 2017 and a number of other things from, you know, special branding of our city to camellia that will be propagated with the name of Newburgh on it to all different kinds of things, both in the horticulture and the tourism side. So more to come about that. Then the mayor and I met with Senator Merkley and Representative Bonamici's staff and went over a whole series of federal issues, including, you know, bypass funding for transportation, but also some other things, whether it's money for the arts that might be for the cultural center, but also for things that included the fact, since this is Veterans Week coming up, not having a medical facility here and having some difficulties for our veterans, either not being able to find space to the Salem Clinic or just the time of appointments to get to Portland. So there's actually a request that's gone in that we're exploring with VA Portland to attempt to be a model like Lincoln City and have a one or two day a week clinic here working with an existing provider. So it'll be a request and we'll see where that goes. And we also gave them a whole laundry list of things that we could use some help from our federal legislators. The last two items, we met with Roy Gathercole. This is a local person that's a real ADA advocate that you, we've seen at the Planning Commission and also in some of the advisory meetings. And we talked about how the city can respond better to a lot of the ADA needs, whether it's in sidewalks, and we had some recent issues we've talked about, sidewalk improvements we made, but something very simple like this building where our restroom has an ADA symbol on it, but it's not fully compatible with the current standards for ADA. So we made the commitment to fix those, which we're going to do here, and just work with him and find others that we can move forward with the ADA. The last one is just a reminder and ask that if any of you are planning on going to the Rural Development Institute's Economic Development Summit, and I know it's in the middle of the day, so it's, it can be difficult, but they're still, and Sue is taking reservations for any of you that can make the meeting on, you need to respond by the 10th, and I think the meeting is the following Monday?
Monday of 14.
Following Monday. So, and Mayor, the rest of it, I'll just, I'll email to you and to the press tonight.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the city manager? None appearing. We will move to consent calendar. I have nobody signed up to speak to us under the consent calendar. I do have people signed up that want to speak to us on particular items on the agenda, but nobody for the public comments, so I'm going to open and close the public comments. And we will move to the consent calendar. Pleasure to the council. Counselor Corey?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Johnson, is there any further discussion? None appearing. Do I hear a call for the question? Question's been called for, and all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. None appearing. Consent calendar is adopted. And with that, we will now move to new business. So I'm going to invite Mr. Rux to the table. And the first one under new business that we're going to be looking at is Resolution 2016 333339, and this is a resolution to waive or alternately deny a waiver of system development charges for wastewater, storm system, and transportation construction for the Shalhoun Aquatic Fitness, Shalhoun Aquatic and Fitness Center at 1802 Hayworth Avenue. Mr. Rux?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Doug Rux, Community Development Director. As the mayor indicated, this is a request by Shalhoun Park and Recreation District for a waiver of SDCs related to the new pool. The new pool has gone through its land use process, through its conditionally used and design review. Plans are in now in the Building Division and being reviewed and coordinating with the project's architect. The facility will be a little over 40,000 square feet. This request applies just to the new pool. It does not apply to converting the existing pool into the fitness facility. That project would be at a later date, and CPRD may have some additional insight they can provide on that. Back in February of 2007, the council passed Resolution 2007 2698, which established a program to waive system development charges for projects that serve low to moderate income families or individuals. These waivers under that particular program can be for all of the SDCs, a portion of the SDCs, or none of the SDCs. There are criteria that were established in that resolution. The first one is that the organization requesting the waiver must be a certified nonprofit, and CPRD is a government entity. Conversations with the city attorney is similar to a nonprofit, they do not pay taxes. The second one is that the organization has to principally serve low to moderate income families and/or individuals. As noted in your report, Attachment 1 is all of the material that was provided by CPRD for their activities related to the pool, ranging from Boy Scout programs courtesy, public swims, shower cards, scholarships, helping kids who are served by the Department of Human Services, the high school, George Fox, and so forth. It's kind of a list of a paragraph of activities that they're involved in. There was some supplemental information that was also submitted as part of Attachment 1, and that is in regard to some activities for August of 2016 and utilization of the pool facility itself by different groups and organizations. One of the things we noted in the staff report, though, is that there's nothing that definitively identifies that predominantly, predominantly when we dealt with this issue on the Habitat Restore, we looked at 51% or greater of those services are serving low to moderate income individuals, but there's a lot of information that CPRD did provide. Part of that was referred to the, the information that came out from the Newburgh School District that 50% of the kids are in the reduced lunch program, kind of equating that to individuals who use the pool. You might have 1,750 kids that may meet that load of moderate income. The third piece was looking at the criterion regarding the impact upon SDC funds themselves. So in the request that was provided to us, CPRD's architects identified there was about $275,454 in SDC charges by their estimation. That was for sewer, storm sewer, and transportation. It's broken down in your report specifically, so transportation was 206,984, the storm was 10,352, and the wastewater was 58,118. We, at the staff level, looked at all of that information and reviewed it, and we came up with a slightly different number in the calculation, and our overall total came to So it was higher than what the estimate was that was prepared. I should also note that CPRD is not required to pay a parks SDC. Parks SDCs only apply to residential development, not to commercial and industrial, but they were given a waiver by the school district for their construction excise tax, and that was approximately $20,000. We also talked with CPRD about options, other than just a waiver or a partial reduction on that, and that would be to finance the SDCs. And so on page 17 in your packet, there's several paragraphs that refer to that, and we do have provisions in our municipal code that does allow financing of SDCs. Talking with our finance director, we have financed some SDCs in the past. We have one that's currently outstanding, and that's being paid. Part of those discussions with CPRD, though, led to some questions that are bullet points in your packet that talks about what might the length of time for the payments be? Would there be an interest charge or possibility of zero interest or not? Could the parks SDC that we collect on CPRD's behalf through an intergovernmental agreement for residential development be capped for a certain amount for some period of time in order to help repay SDC charges? And then, of course, those other unidentified aspects. And a couple of those I thought about after having discussions with the CPRD staff was, you know, they went out for a bond because there's a lien provision that's in our code, and how does that work? We haven't gotten to any of those details of discussion, but that's something that would need to be considered. And then the secondly, the city attorney and I talked about, does the city council have the authority to do zero or maybe close to zero on an interest rate? Then we went through an analysis because we were required by the resolution to, looking at the impact on the respective SDC funds in a little bit different fashion, and we provided some numbers for you about the rate. So the $293,898 for the transportation SDC was about 33% of what was budgeted for this year, and it's about 11% of the overall fund. We also then looked at the wastewater, that charge of 58,136. That's about 12% of the projected revenue for this fiscal year, and it's about 1% of that overall fund. The next one was for the storm water, and that was 9,227 was the estimate we prepared by city staff, and that's 30% of the revenue for this fiscal year, about 6% of the total overall fund. We've also noted in your report that the funding for the pool came from a bond measure that was passed by the voters. The bond amount was $19.9 million, and that occurred back in November of 2014. Then there's the section in your report that deals with just the fiscal impact, and we've kind of already covered that, and two of the other criteria that were already listed out in your resolution. So with that, I will, I guess I'll go to kind of the recommendation. So as the mayor indicated, it's back on page 15 in your packet, you have two options to address this issue. One would be adopt a resolution approving the system development charge waivers for the wastewater, storm, and transportation system, or you could adopt a resolution denying storm system, well, like, system development charge for the wastewater, storm, and transportation system. As I noted earlier, of course, there's that hybrid we didn't put in as a third alternative, because it gets a little confusing, is you could do a portion thereof. That will conclude staff's presentation.
Questions for staff at this time? Patrick? Counselor Johnson? Counselor Esson?
Mr. Rux, if we were to finance those SDCs, what specific projects or what happens to the projects on our CIP, either this year or in future years?
Well, as identified in your report is, we have three primary transportation projects that we're advancing forward. That's the Villa Road project from Hayworth to Park. We have the Crestview Drive project, which is in partnership, and then the third is the Elliott Road. They may have to be delayed if SDCs were waived in full or in part. We didn't do any kind of analysis on if there was a partial. For the storm water, similar issue, it's the same three projects, because when we do transportation projects, we usually have the transportation, storm, sanitary sewer, sometimes the water. So it could be having to push projects out further in time.
Follow on? Follow on? Your mic, please. To Patrick's question?
Yes. In your answer, you mentioned a third option involving Elliott Road. My question to city management would be, have some ADA promises been made in relationship to Elliott Road?
In discussions we've had on the ADA issue with Elliott Road, that project would be addressing the sidewalk situation along the west side of Elliott Road. So there would be some ADA components associated with that. But we are also looking at, could there be a mid-block crossing just to the north of these old mill shopping complex that has a Starbucks, so you could get across from the west to the east side to get to a sidewalk that would then take you up to Hayworth to get, go back to the west to get across, and then go to the school? Or could you put the missing piece of sidewalk that's on the east side of the road so that you have a traffic light that's sitting at LA 99, get on the east side, and then you would have a run up to Hayworth?
That is your, that is your third commitment, Elliott Road?
Yes.
Counselor Esson?
I went back and looked at the Habitat for Humanity letter, and they talked about in their request, and I guess we went ahead and waived the $72,472.19 earlier this year. And in their letter, they talked about that there was a difference in the number of substantially different from the trips generated by a freestanding discount store and trip generation rate of a store of this type will generate and how many trips it would, would generate. And then it finished up by saying, "This is probably why the city of Newburgh's transportation system fees calculation table states applicants are strongly, strongly encouraged to conduct at their own expense independent trip generation studies in support of their application." Is this something that, that has been done by the Park District?
In this particular situation, CPRD was required to do a traffic analysis based upon their proposed project, and that was reviewed by our Engineering Services Department as part of our conditionally used and design review. My recollection, there was nothing taken as an objection towards the trip generation that would be created from that. So I guess maybe back up. So the trip generation, the type of category in the ITE manual establishes a trip generation, which then translates to what the charge would be for the transportation SDC. So in the Habitat Restore situation, there was a difference of opinion between Habitat's traffic engineer and our engineer about what their classification was in the ITE manual. In this situation, that has not come up. We look at, this is a recreational facility overall, and so that's that number. So CPRD has not raised an issue about the classification category that would be part of the calculation of the transportation SDC. The other part of that is, there's the criteria under this particular resolution doesn't address and deal with trip, trip generation numbers. It deals with, does it predominantly serve low or moderate income families? Is it a nonprofit organization, and what's the impact upon the system development charge funds?
Follow on? Follow on?
This is a remodeling project. So my, my question is, and this is just a general question, so this means that, as I understand it here, I'm reading in the paper, that we're talking about a little over $300,000 out of a possible $700,000 permitting cost overall. I wasn't really sure what the $700,000 was, but as I understand it, then what we're saying is if any business or any agency or anybody in town decides to remodel to make it a better project, then they have to pay up to, if they're doing a $20 million project, they have to pay $300,000 to $700,000 to remodel. Is, is that correct?
I can't speak to what was in the paper. I would think I would leave that up to CPRD to explain, but in this situation, what is occurring is that the Park District is building a new structure. It's a little over a 40,000 square foot pool. That increases the capacity. There'll be additional trips that are on the roadway. They're adding new parking spaces to accommodate the patrons that would come to this particular facility.
Do you have a follow on?
Remodeling is the present facility to a exercise facility?
That is another component of the overall program. In discussions that we had and through the land use process, they wanted to convert the existing pool into a fitness facility. It talked about having gym courts, an indoor track, a weightlifting facility and so forth, but that's not part of this request. This request is dealing specifically with just the new pool, the new 40,000 square foot pool.
I did have a follow on.
Follow on? Counselor Esson?
I'm seeing city loan as a possible way to go, and I'm also reading that in the meeting from the Park District, that he noted that SDCs, future SDCs that the district would get could be used to help pay off any loan the district takes, and it said a consultant would come address the board on financial options. So have we looked at this as a possible way to go, or have we followed?
Again, Counselor, I think I would say that would be a question to direct to the Parks District itself. What we, what I talked with them about was the feasibility or the possibility of financing the SDC charges outlined in your report. Now, in our code, the council is the one who has to approve financing of SDCs, and the council's also the body that has to establish the rate for that financing of those SDCs. So there's a process that's involved with it.
You have final? Follow on?
As I'm understanding from what was asked by Stephen earlier, there are, we were counting on these fees to be able to complete projects. In other words, we had put into our projections of how much money we had and what might be coming, and so we are counting on this to be able to finish other projects? Is that how that worked out?
I would say, Counselor, it's not necessarily to finish, is that through our capital improvement program that the council has approved, we look at and estimate what we're going to have for development and what those SDC revenue is going to be to finance those programs. And so the three that are coming up are Villa Road, which the culvert was just done, the second phase now is the road. There is Elliott Road, north of 99, going up towards the high school. And then the third one is Crestview Drive, basically going from Highway 99 over to the Springbrook Roundabout. So as development occurs, residential, commercial, or industrial, if they're adding on to their building, building a new building, they have system development charges applied to those projects. Those revenues then go towards those capital projects that are in our five-year CIP and then in the annual fiscal budget for those particular projects. So in conversations with the city engineer, asked the question, if these were to be reduced or waived, which projects would be impacted? And then those are the three.
Do you have a follow on? Counselor Corey?
When the project was formulated by CPRD, at that time, they knew about the SDCs way back, right? It's not something brand new that the, that we just threw on them and said, now you owe us all this money for SDCs because now you're ready to do the project.
I would assume that they are aware of that. Again, that might be a question if asked of them. I know when I've worked on capital projects, we've gone through and done all the estimating for what all the fees and the SDCs are going to be in addition to what we think the estimated cost would be. In a conversation we did have, it was indicated that in their analysis, they estimated about a half a million dollars or so in fees and SDCs. That's a little bit more, well, that's less than what the actual charge is. Also put in your report, there was a few, a few components that we don't have to because we got a separate topic and a second request on this, is there's some information that we don't have on the second case when we get to because we don't have the numbers yet. But it's also important that, you know, these are estimates at this point in time. The final calculation on all these SDCs come at the time of the issuance of building permits.
Follow on? Follow on to the financing of the SDCs. If, if there was a decision that we, we allow financing of the SDCs with or without interest, what does that do to the projects that we're talking about? Does that still delay the projects, or how does that work?
It could, based on conversations with the city engineer this morning. Again, it would, part determined if it was fully waived, then we'd have to go back and look at the three projects and the timing and look at what project might have to be pushed out a little bit in time or not. If it was a partial reduction, then we'd still have to go through that same analysis and say, okay, what's the impact on the timing of those three projects? Knowing that with one of those, we do have a grant from the state, so we're going to have some time. We don't have a signed grant agreement yet on that, but there will be some timelines that we will have to meet, and that is Counselor McKinney had indicated about the issues on the ADA, based on the discussions we've had on Elliott Road as well.
Counselor McKinney, Counselor Johnson?
Uh, my questions are in regards to the three criteria or the three projects that we're dealing with now. Villa Road is not completed.
That is correct. All that's been done is the culvert work for the roadway. The road improvement is yet to come.
In order to complete that project, which is in the budget now, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Uh, how many dollars are needed to complete the Villa Road estimate?
I might turn to our city engineer for that one. It's not a number I have off the top of my head.
Please identify yourself.
Karen Hoffman, city engineer. Um, at this point, uh, we are estimating, um, and we're still looking at some of the right of way and some, some, uh, detailed pieces. We're still in preliminary design for the next piece of the puzzle, but we're looking at about another, um, three to four million dollars to finish up that work.
Follow on here.
Follow on?
Thank you. So, um, with reductions of S D Cs or this request that we're considering tonight, uh, does that put the Villa Road project in any type of jeopardy?
It could be a, a flipping of timing for some projects. Um, so I'll give you an example. The Crestview Drive project, we had, uh, identified to start doing the design work in fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, so sometime after July of twenty seventeen. Um, the Villa, uh, the Elliot Road project, we were looking at eighteen, nineteen, um, for that project. And of course, then we have the Villa Road going on now. So if all of the funds, revenue that we've identified hasn't come in, we may have to do an adjustment. If we don't have all of the funds to do Villa Road, then should we go and look at Elliot Road, uh, to do first? Um, and then we've got this nuance with our partnership on the Crestview Drive and whatever comes out of a grant agreement, can that shift by one year or not? I, I don't know. I have not had the conversations with our representative on that one from the state.
Follow on, please.
Follow on?
So the projects on Villa Road north of the trestle, do they become projects that are in peril, uh, as far as like Martel Commons and some of the other things like that directly related to the Villa Road passages north and south?
It, it's a, in part, a, a timing issue. Um, so at this point in time, we do not have a land use application for development of the former Martel site. But we are in about sixty percent design work or so on the Villa Road project. So don't know if the land use will come and be completed before we finish design, or will design of the road be finished before Martel Commons submits their land use application.
Final question is that since the crossing project is something still in the future, as far as that being project number two or whatever, uh, would, would A D A promises in regards to Elliot Road escalate the timeline, uh, to be able to complete that project? And would forgiveness of S D Cs and other things like that impair the Elliot Road project?
Um, again, I think there's a possibility that, that a flip might be able to or could be considered is, do you do Elliot before you complete Villa Road? And I wouldn't necessarily, it's A D A promises is that we have a project identified to do improvements on Elliot Road on that west side that will enhance and improve the A D A accessibility. But as we've said, we're looking at fiscal year eighteen, nineteen for that particular project.
I said final, I said final, but I lied.
No, it's, it's okay.
It's, it's in relationship, it's in relationship to Elliot Road. With the A D A discretion, uh, discussion about avoiding a federal lawsuit, does the third project take on impetus that it normally would not, uh, possess in trying to avoid this federal lawsuit, which would have disastrous repercussions for the city of Newburgh?
I think the short answer to that would be yes.
Counselor Johnson, Counselor Essen?
Um, just, just so we're clear here and to make sure I have it clear in my, in my head, so tonight, the total ask from the, the Shenhalum parking rec is three eighteen, roughly, for fees and three sixty-one, roughly, for S D Cs for a total of nearly seven hundred thousand dollars. Is that right, or am I wrong?
No, let me provide some clarification. We haven't gotten to the second.
Yeah, I know, I'm just trying to get it.
But in that other request, it would be a reduction in fees, and that reduction would be, uh, ten thousand four hundred dollars.
Okay, okay, great. And then, uh, follow on, which part of Crestview are we working on? What, what?
It goes from, um, Highway ninety-nine at Providence, the signal. It goes north up to the existing improved portion of Crest, Crestview, then goes west and goes out to Springbrook Road at the roundabout.
Okay, great.
Counselor Essen, Counselor Corey?
Um, I'm looking in your report, and I'm also looking at the letter from CPRD, and there was some comment in there about an eighty thousand dollar cul-de-sac that the, uh, Park District had, um, granted the city. And I'm wondering, uh, is that something that we're trying, that they're hoping that we take into consideration or that, uh, would be a portion of a reason to, uh, reduce at least that eighty thousand dollars?
The counsel, in their land use application, they were looking to take access off of Cherry Street. Cherry Street at the time, or at this time, is a road that dead ends and has a barricade. Um, we don't allow driveways to connect directly onto the end of a, of a particular roadway. That then required that a cul-de-sac had to be constructed. Um, that cul-de-sac is partially on CPRD's property, a portion, partially on the abutting property, uh, immediately to the north. So there was, there is a cost associated with that, but it does provide them a driveway access in order to get to the backside of the new pool facility for a part of their service area.
So to answer my question, I'll follow on. Go ahead.
Follow on to that, Counselor Bacon?
Did we ask for that, or did they ask for that?
They wanted access, and so the issue, we get, we get into all these design issues. So it comes to the issue about having access around the entire perimeter of the new aquatics facility and what is potentially the remodel of the existing aquatics facility. So we had issues about surface access. We had issues about fire access around the perimeter of that building. Uh, so one of the ways to resolve that was, would have been to put an access road twenty feet wide all the way around the perimeter of the building. There was an outdoor pool that was identified as part of that, of the project. And so all of a sudden, it came to a space issue. Uh, and if they were going to have the outdoor pool, you couldn't have the perimeter of road around. So the alternative then is to go to Cherry Street, put in a cul-de-sac bulb, build a driveway off of that, and then get back to the surface drive area in order to serve the new aquatics building.
Follow on, Counselor Essen?
So which, as I understand what you're saying, if I can understand it, is that, um, this was not something the city was getting, uh, would have looked at as something we were getting, it was something we, they would require to do?
With development comes requirements to mitigate the impacts of, of, of the development itself. So in this situation, we looked at options for them to have access around the perimeter of the building or to put a cul-de-sac head on that existing Cherry Street in order to provide that access. So there was choices that were made available. In the end, what occurred was the application packet that came in had the cul-de-sac bulb, which then has a driveway off of that cul-de-sac bulb that goes to the building and then along a portion of the building in order to serve as kind of a delivery and service for that site. It keeps it separate from the public parking side, which is off of Hayworth on the north side of the building. So we, in the end, after discussions, going through many pre-app meetings with CPRD, working through all of these details, what we ended up was an application that showed a cul-de-sac. Yes, the cul-de-sac does have a cost, and that cost is borne by the Parks District as part of their project.
Counselor Corey?
Uh, yes, it's more of a follow on to the project, again, the Crestview Drive project in particular. Um, is it, wasn't that going to be shared with developers, uh, or has that already been figured into the cost of the project that we have with the city right now?
So what we have is an estimate, the Crestview Drive project, um, is an estimated five million dollar project going from Highway ninety-nine to Springbrook Road Roundabout. What we're looking at is Graymore, as part of their development, is building the first leg, so that would go from ninety-nine up to the existing Crestview Drive. Then the city would use our S D C funds, uh, which we've identified in our application packet of one point one million dollars. That's then matched with seven hundred and forty thousand dollars through the Regional Solutions Program, and we would go as far west as we could with those funds, and then the balance of it is the property owner to take it out to the roundabout.
Okay, so follow on?
Follow on?
Just to clarify then, that has all been figured in to what our expense is going to be on that project, um, and reducing the S D Cs would impact that project then as it sits?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for staff at this time? I have a number of people that have signed up that would like to speak to us about that that are with us this evening. None appearing, then we will, um, open it up for public comment, and I would like to remind all the citizens that have signed up to, to speak to the council, that each speaker will have five minutes to address the council. Also, collective comments by an individual under public, uh, under these comment period will be limited to five minutes. And I also suggest that the, uh, the council is requesting that all persons in attendance at the council meeting avoid conduct that is unreasonably loud, disruptive, or profane. Additionally, clamping and cheering and speaking out of order is also discouraged. And with that, I'm going to call on Mr. Jim McMaster, please. If you'd come forward and identify yourself.
Yes, I'm Jim McMaster, Shenhalum Park and Recreation District.
Please turn on the mic, the far right-hand silver button.
Jim McMaster with Shenhalum Park and Recreation District, and I also turn to Foreman with Sid Scott with, uh, Scott Edwards Architecture. He's going to tell, kind of tell you where we are financially with this project, so you have an idea of what we're facing. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank the staff and Doug for going through the numbers. It's been a moving target with our numbers. You saw the numbers that we had, the numbers that he had, and then we're going to probably move again before we finish this, you know, finish out with our, our permitting. In nineteen seventy, uh, voters came and asked for a bond to build the first pool in this community, and that pool ran about five hundred thousand dollars at that time. Now, you know, we're looking at a great deal in, in the millions for this new facility, and our costs are escalating. We wouldn't be here tonight to talk to you about helping us with the S D C waiver if it wasn't for these escalating costs. Uh, but we're in that situation. We want to build like they did in nineteen seventy, a pool that's going to last the community for fifty years, and it's going to be the right size to last for fifty years. And when they built this pool initially, a lot of people were saying, this pool is too large. Well, people have said the same thing with the project we're doing now, but in fifty years, you've probably seen the numbers of how large this community will be, so we're looking towards that. Um, when we went through and looking at demographics of the folks that come to our facility, we looked at, you know, I was asked by Doug, well, can you tell us how much people are making to come to your facility? Well, I can't do that, you know, you can't stand there and ask that. But we did look at the, at the lunch program with the schools. We looked at all the different groups that we serve. We looked at the homeless that we serve, um, to give showers and so forth, and we felt that we met the intent of, of your resolution. We, Doug, uh, talked a little bit about the cul-de-sac, and I want to look at the bigger picture of that. We put the cul-de-sac into the project so we wouldn't have big trucks, chemical trucks, garbage trucks, and so on and so forth, running in front of our building, in front of the children that are there, and so on and so forth, so they come in and feed the facility from behind. With that said, that cul-de-sac that was partially donated by the Park District to the city and partially donated by Prestige Care to the city, um, is going to be more than eighty thousand because later, after we turned in these numbers, we found out we need to put streetlights on there too, so it'll be escalated a little bit because of that. But with that said, that also gives the new care facility an advantage to expand, which will help financially the city, because they now have an entrance to the back of their facility. They have a huge lot back there. They want to build a bigger facility. Now they can do it, and they don't have to have the garbage trucks running in front of their front doors and so on and so forth, and the, and the, and the emergency vehicles. We also gave up parking as part of this plan along Hayworth Avenue. We didn't want to, but the city asked us to put a bike lane in, and we donated also part of the property on Hayworth Avenue back to the city because the property line was not drawing correctly back when we, uh, when, when that land was purchased by the city, by the Park District. So we did give money, we, we did give back as much as we could to the city, plus an amazing center that we're going to be giving to the constituents. Um, you know, the new center's going to improve the livability of our community. It's going to be more people to the community to spend their money here. It's going to create more interest for families to move to Newburgh, even though Newburgh is, seems to be growing like leaps and bounds right now. Um, the election of the bond was a passage of sixty-three percent of people that wanted to see this take place. Um, you know, I, I urge you to adopt the resolution that we put, that's before you and to waive the S D C fees, but I'd like Sid to talk real quick about why we're where we're at.
Excellent, thanks, Jim. Uh, my name is Sid Scott, I'm with Scott Edwards Architecture, and, uh, just, uh, opening comment is, is that's really been a great community effort. I think that everybody's worked very hard to get absolutely the most we can for the community. And so one of the things that we've been battling over the last couple of years is the escalation of, uh, construction costs. And it really stems from, uh, in the recession when the construction industry was hit very hard and it lost a lot of subcontractors and contractors, uh, so there was quite a vacuum. And when construction picked up again in the last two, three years, uh, there's a real shortage, and so that nets in costs going up, uh, primarily and principally in the labor area. Uh, so it's very hard to get, uh, folks to look at your project, and, uh, if you get it, it might be a high number just to see if you get the job and that kind of thing. So that's the market we're in currently. And, uh, so as, uh, the net result of that is we've seen a lot of escalation. So historically, construction costs go up historically about three percent a year. That's what you figure into your budget. So if you think I'm two years out to start construction, you'd put in three percent for those two years or, you know, for each year. So what we saw in two thousand fifteen was, instead of the three percent, it was closer to eight to nine percent in escalation. So that added an additional on top of what we were anticipating as a three percent increase, there's about a five percent increase or a six percent. This year was even higher, so we've seen about a little over ten percent increase in construction costs. So that's an additional seven percent. So since we started the project, basically, there's an additional twelve percent of escalation in construction cost that the community's not getting any more for that. It's simply costing twelve, it's actually thirteen percent higher. So it results in a very large number, and, uh, and so we've been working very diligently as a team to try to, again, keep the project, uh, as much as we possibly can for the community and getting as much as we can, but we continue to roll the rock uphill in terms of escalation. So that's been a real part of what has driven the costs up on the project.
Questions for either Mr. McMaster's or for Sid Scott?
Two first names.
Counselor Bacon, Counselor Essen?
I just want to, I voted yes on the pool bond. I've been to the pool four times. So saying that it won because people, I, I want the community to have what the community wants, but comparing a win to usage, it is not really, um, because I, I've been to four times and it was a birthday party. They were all birthday parties, so I've never actually been in the pool. So, but I want the community to have it as well, so just, just to compare the, I'm willing to pay, help pay for it, but it's not something I use.
Counselor Essen?
So my understanding is there's two requirements for us to pass this, um, request. One of them being that you are a, um, nonprofit organization, which apparently there's no question about that. And the other question getting to be about, are you primarily for, uh, low income to moderate income people? And, uh, do you think you meet that requirement?
You know, it's, it's, you know, if you looked at the, at the lunch program that the school district has set up, we think we do. It's, it's really difficult to give you those exact numbers. I would assume that it was difficult for others to give you those exact numbers also. Like I said before, we don't interview people and find out what their economic issues are and where they stand. But we also, beyond- But we also, beyond just the aquatic center, if you look at the district as a whole, we donate all the space for fish. We donate a building for fish to feed the hungry. We donate office space to Habitat for Humanity. We do all those things as a district. So if you look as a district as a whole, as well as the pool, we think we are. I think that we go beyond in a lot of ways to do that.
As a follow-on? Quite frankly, in discussion, one of the issues that has come up is, okay, you issued the bond issue. There should have been some contingencies involved. And now you're coming to us because you didn't do your job right. I mean, frank frankly. But I question that thinking in that, from what I understand, you did go back when you got the first bid and negotiate the price down considerably. Is that correct?
Yeah, we did a CMGC, Construction Management, General Contractor Program where we brought the contractor in early to work with the architects to see what we could value engineer down. And we valued, and I think Sid could probably talk to that more, we valued engineered quite a bit down to try to give you the amenities, but maybe they won't be as nice as you'd like them to be as far as tile or as far as other things like that. So, but an aquatic center with demodification and heat and bodies and water is such, so much different than just a regular office building. There's so many parts to it to make people comfortable and to alleviate skin irritation from the chlorine and so on and so forth. So it's a very difficult project. So we tried to take the things that weren't specific going to affect people, and we cut them out. And we also are looking at the fitness center and so on and so forth. That was also part of this project that we are looking for the second phase. The folks in the community asked us, they said, we want you to leave this pool open for us while you build a new one. I mean, that's what they asked, and that's what we told them the bond we would do. That also caused us money. But we wanted to meet their needs to continue their exercise program, whatever they were doing, too. So we tried to do as much as we could to bring the prices down. You asked about us not doing our due diligence at the beginning, and, you know, I think that we brought the community in. We looked at a lot of aquatic centers that were like us. We use those numbers. But again, then we had the escalation. If we were doing it when the economy was down, we wouldn't have a problem right now. But the economy is escalating, costs are escalating. I hope I answered your question.
You have a follow-on?
Yes, so, yes, I do. So what I'm asking is, how much did you cut out of the project doing what you did? How much did you lower the project, you know?
I would estimate we're about ten percent. We've taken about ten percent out.
So a million, something, two million?
Million and a half.
Million and a half, that you've already cut the project, is that correct? Thank you.
Council Johnson?
First off, I want to make a statement and then also ask a question. CPRD taught me how to play soccer, didn't really take.
You should have swam.
Right? Well, I tried to learn, and so I have two daughters, and they learned how to swim at the pool. So thank you very much for that and for any of that service. In my travels, I have realized that pools are not exactly the best economic project you want to do if you want to make money. And I think Newburgh is incredibly lucky to have an amenity that's supported by voters to come in to our town. I just, I think we're incredibly lucky. These guys hate it when I say this, but when I was over in Cambie, we were talking about closing a pool, and it's so nice to be in a community. And Cambie ended up supporting their pool, but to be in a community that supports their amenities. And so, you know, reading the staff report, reading the news accounts, it just sounds like it's bad timing with the economy. You know, the fact that the economy is good, I think we should all be happy about, but in this case, yikes. My question is this, is that, you know, staff kind of answered this a little bit for me, but I'd like to get some more clarification. So you had budgeted money in your project for SDCs and fees, and you were fully prepared to pay those. Is that, is that accurate?
Approximately half a million, that's correct.
Okay. Follow-on?
Follow-on.
Okay. Now, I read in the paper that you guys are still roughly about a million, million and a half short. Is that accurate, roughly?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I completed the entire project.
Oh, yeah, I've completed the entire project. So would the waiving of these SDCs and part of the fees, would that go to help bridge some of that gap? Is that kind of why you're here tonight? Is to try to find ways to make this happen?
That's true, otherwise we wouldn't be here.
Okay, great. And then, lastly, what, I mean, obviously, you probably prefer us waiving the SDC fees versus financing them. If we financed SDC fees, what does that do to your project as far as overall impact to the pool?
Well, I'm going to, Don Clements will be up in a little bit. He could probably answer that question better than I.
Okay.
So I'll let him answer that one, superintendent.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions at this time for these two gentlemen? I do have one question, if I may. The bond was for nineteen point nine, is that correct?
That's correct.
And what are you, at this point, experiencing that you're spending?
Well, go ahead.
Go ahead, Don.
I get, you're the one who tells me how much it costs.
Construction is approaching eighteen million dollars at this point, when we initially estimated about sixteen point five.
Follow-on? How much to complete then? You said eighteen, but how much to complete? Thank you, Commissioner McKinney.
Yeah, so the eighteen million is the aquatic side, and then to complete the fitness, we're probably another million, 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 million and a half.
And also the soft costs.
So that puts you, what, how much then? Eighteen, nineteen, nineteen point nine? Are you still within the nineteen point nine?
We are not within the nineteen point nine.
The one thing we're not mentioning here is we have the soft costs on the other side. SDCs would be soft costs, architectural costs, all those other costs that are involved there. You know, we've got those costs, too. So it's escalated across the board.
Mr. Mayor. Commissioner McKinney?
How much money is needed to complete the entirety of the project? Soft cost, hard cost, whatever. What are you really looking at?
We're going to have, with a little bit of interest on the bond, we'll have a little over twenty million. We need another million and a half to complete after that. And that includes hard costs, soft costs.
Twenty-one and a half million.
That's correct.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Mr. Matt Bae, is my close?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Please identify yourself, again, five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Matt Bae, and I reside at six-two-seven Ironwood Drive in Newburgh, Oregon. I'm here tonight representing the Shalhoub Swim Team, a registered nonprofit located in Newburgh. I've provided a copy of my testimony and would ask it be added to the record. The Shalhoub Swim Team represents over a hundred families who participate in competitive swimming at the Shalhoub Aquatic Center in Newburgh. We've existed in Newburgh for decades, serving thousands of kids and adults, including those who cannot afford to pay. Many of our families work tirelessly to help pass the bond measure to build the new aquatic center. The measure was overwhelmingly supported by the community passing at over sixty percent. Unfortunately, the success of projects like the new aquatic center is often tied to the costs of construction, which can be volatile and ever-increasing. In this case, since the passage of the ballot measure, our robust economy has caused facility construction costs to rise, which is holding the true, which is holding true across the region. While construction costs can be challenging to control, others, others have flexibility in the project, oh, wait. While construction costs can be challenging to control, others have flexibility, and the project has worked hard to identify those areas. What has included, this has included value engineering, scaling down certain amenities, and using re-existing items when possible. However, another challenging expense is the high cost of permits, review charges, and impact fees. The project has worked very hard to also obtain reductions in those areas when feasible. The Newburgh School District has supported us in the effort and eliminated the construction excise tax on this community project. Similarly, the park district is requesting the city also help in making this project a success by eliminating a portion of the development impact fees levied on the facility. Our members would ask that you strongly consider the park district's request to waive the three hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and eleven in impact fees on the project as outlined in their September sixth letter, which is attached to the counselor materials. This is not a request to eliminate all fees. We understand helping permit a project of this size comes at a cost to the city. However, supplying the project with those funds would help tremendously in keeping certain core facility features intact. The council would not be setting a negative precedent by forgiving these charges. As outlined in your packet, impact fees have been eliminated before in Newburgh, and other communities across Oregon have done the same. Since two thousand and ten, the towns of Malala Bend, Roseburg, Gresham, and Grants Pass have all reduced, waived, or eliminated SDC fees for various types of development to meet larger community goals. The Dals, Seaside, Tigard, and Wilsonville are also studying similar approaches. Those efforts have helped many projects become viable that would have otherwise not happened and have furthered larger initiatives in those cities and have helped their greater communities. This is important to note, the new aquatic center fills needs beyond those outlined in your policy criteria for waiving impact fees. The replacement of this facility helps support the ongoing success of our program for hundreds of kids in Newburgh and surrounding areas, but also serves other important community needs. The new aquatic center is truly a community asset and serves the entire population of Newburgh. The park district oversees a robust scholarship program to help individuals and families participate in important activities at the center that they could otherwise not afford. Those activities range from teaching children to swim to programs that help serve the homeless. Seniors participate in numerous activities to stay active. Our schools partner on events, and in the future, facilities will help serve the George Fox Swim Team through a joint use agreement. The facility also generates tremendous economic impact to Newburgh. It provides jobs and hosts events that draw people from around the state and region to participate in trainings, tournaments, and swim meets. The National Recreation and Park Association estimates that each person attending an out-of-town sports function spends between fifty and two hundred dollars per day in the community, depending on the type of event and if they need to stay overnight. Hotels, gas station vendors, and other businesses benefit directly from those financial impacts. Our hope is that between the policy guidelines already in place, similar examples from around the state, and the information we've outlined here, you'll see waiving these impact fees as an investment in the greater Newburgh community. We feel it's a sound decision that helps continue moving this project forward for everyone that lives here and worked so hard to pass the original measure. On behalf of the Shalhoub Swim Team, board members, families, thank you for your time and thank you for your support.
Any questions for the gentleman? None appearing, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Bart Ryerson, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council.
Would you please identify yourself?
My name is Bart Ryerson.
We can't recognize you.
I'm here representing Shalhoub Park and Recreation District. I think we're better together. City of Newburgh and the Shalhoub Park and Recreation District, we're all supporting the same community. While we're asking you to waive our system development charges and also the increase in fees on the building permits, those reduction in fees are going to support the same community. Councilor Esslin asked about the budget that we had and the nineteen million, nineteen point nine million, and suggested maybe we didn't do our due diligence. We actually had wanted to ask for a larger twenty-two million dollar amount from the community when we did the bond measure, but we hired a consultant that did some surveys, and they advised us against that because they're afraid that we would not be able to realize the full amount. And so what we're looking at now is a reduced scope of the project. We'd actually like to do the outdoor pool, which is actually, which has currently been removed from the scope of the project. We're going to have to borrow money. We want to build a world-class facility that's going to last this community for the next fifty years, and we got one chance to do that right. We've done everything we can to value engineer the project, and we're still short. But the Shalhoub Park and Rec Board has made a commitment to this community because of the overwhelming support that we had with the bond measure, that we're going to figure out a way to complete this. For the pool part of it, that means we're going to have to borrow some money. That doesn't even begin to touch the fitness facility that we're also committing to completing. And so because of that shortfall, that's why we're here to request that you waive those system development charges. That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Ryerson, Councilor McKinney?
It's nice to see you here.
Thank you.
You and I can remember when we were tackling the animal shelter. And when the animal shelter came back to us, you and I are sitting on that committee, and they presented us a figure of about two million dollars to complete that project. And we swallowed it hard and said no. And I think that we ended up with a project that was maybe about a half million dollars and, and do some things there. I'm playing the devil's advocate here. But the city has never waived system development charges for itself, neither have we for the animal shelter and other things there. I am interested in your testimony and the other testimonies here because I think there's something amenable that can be done, recognizing the fact that whatever amount is going to be forgiven, is going to have to be levied against neighbors and friends to be able to complete the projects that must be completed just to keep there. And I see Don, he's shaking his head in the background. There's no free money here. But to try and mitigate this particular, you know, situation here, I'd like more interesting testimony in terms of this fifty or fifty-one percent, in terms of how we serve the needy portion of our community here. It is our practice, as Bart can attest, is to build world-class type of facilities. That's the reason we have a skate park that is considered world-class. That's the reason why so many of our other facilities, is that Newburgh has a tradition of doing things well. Now, in relationship to this significant overrun, what is reasonable without creating a further burden upon your friends, my friends, my neighbors, my other citizens there? So, anyway, thanks for your testimony, but you're well familiar of what it costs to make these very, very hard decisions in relationship to lots of different opportunities to serve this community well, except you can't do them all. Thanks, Bart.
Thank you, Stephen. And in response to what you're saying, while we are asking for a waiver of the system development charges, if there's a potential to waive part of those charges or to do the financing, that helps us because we can pay back the financing through our system development charges that we'll charge in the future. So, but obviously, what we'd really like to see is a waiver of the system development charges.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Could you, Councilor Bacon, my apologies?
I'm really interested in, yes, I know Park and Rec serves the community on, at large. I know I work pretty closely with people in poverty, and there, it's unlikely between transportation, two dol, even two dollars is a lot for someone who lives in poverty, especially if they have especially if they have three kids. They're not necessarily gonna come and say, "I have three kids, can I come to the pool free?" First, because they gotta get there. So I understand the showers and I've driven homeless people myself there to take showers. I understand all the other, the outside-the-pool structure, but I would really be interested to find out, I don't know if you could do a secret survey or something to determine whether the actual pool is serving people in poverty. Because I wanna tell you, two dollars is somebody's gas money to get to work. They're probably, they most likely have more than one child. So I, just because the school district is serving fifty-one percent in poverty, I struggle to believe that the pool is. In sports, yes, maybe. And there are scholarships and some of that money comes from Rotary and it comes from all over. And I'm not trying to be, I love the pool, I'm glad it's there, but when you look at this dangerous street in front of the high school, that's our responsibility, that we might have to push off, even though we've been pushing it off. It's so hard for me to sit here, because I serve a constituent group too, and not all of them are pool users. And we're gonna have to get, like Stephen said, get street money. And if we don't get it from this project, that means we have to go back and get it from someone else. And it's a balance of partnerships. Partnership, we don't have a contract for the water, for the golf course. That was a partnership, but that's a give and take. So, I mean, it's a big stretch for me, at the end of the day, to put one project, the pool project, above a street project. Or, I wish there's some other way. Is there grants that could be applied for? I don't know. I don't know what it is. But I'm really struggling to say that the pool serves the larger constituent group and over fifty-one percent of people living in poverty. I wish there was some way to really make sure that we knew that for sure.
Councilor Esslin?
Before, here's Scott, can I respond to Councilor Bacon?
You may.
Denise, whichever way the council votes tonight, I would appreciate any input you have because we have a culture of not turning anyone away and it's important to us to serve all members of our community. And if you have any ideas about how we might make it more accessible, like I said, there's no test that we're gonna supply. If somebody tells us they have, they can't afford a program, but they'd like to swim or they'd like to have one of their children participate in one of our programs, you know, without question, we're gonna serve those people. And if you have any ideas on how to make that easier for us to do, I'd like to speak for the board to say that that's important for us.
Councilor Esslin?
Yes, it's my understanding, reading the packet, that there was over a thousand free passes for people that are in poverty?
That is correct. That's for people in poverty to use the shower system at the pool. And if there were more that were required, we would provide more, so.
So, and I know one of the worst things to be is in poverty and not have been able to take a shower. And that is something I understand you do. In addition, if you're hungry, you go to Fish and you provide the building for that. And without your agency, we wouldn't have that. Habitat for Humanity, executive officer provided, so that we can provide housing. So I'm not sure that we can prove over fifty percent, but I think we can split hairs about whether or not the district does that or not. But, and I'm wondering, have you guys, I see that you went to the school and they gave like twenty thousand in fees?
Yeah, that's a waiver of their excise tax.
And I know that the hospital provides seniors with silver slippers and that. And I don't know if you guys participate with the hospital for the seniors, but that would be something you could do. You were asking for suggestions. That, because we're trying to keep people that are healthy and that's one of the things that I can see that happens. And I'm pretty sure that you guys have a program for seniors there. So, and I don't know if that counts in whatever you're doing, but is that all true or, and is there anything else you can tell us about that?
That is all true. And I'd like to point out that part of the design of the new pool is a zero-depth entry. That's what we're trying to do is encourage that use by disabled people and make the pool more accessible for more of our elder and disabled citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Ryerson. Appreciate it. We have some others that would like to speak to us also. Lisa Rogers, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors and city staff. My name is Lisa Rogers and I live at five-oh-nine South College Street. I was afforded the opportunity to be on the citizen committee that went ahead and promoted the bond, the education behind it, and then have subsequently continued to work with CPRD on a voluntary basis to help make sure that the citizen input was coming forth through the entire development process. My family and I have been really very fortunate as well to be able to use the pool. We have three boys and all three of them participated in swimming in a water polo and it provided them opportunities that allowed for them to go to get higher education, that I don't think they would've gotten into the schools that they did without the support from CPRD and the programs that they had at the pool. I am a firm believer and I'm so excited that this pool is gonna allow for that opportunity for so many other kids in our community, on top of doing things like keeping them safe, providing income opportunities for the rest of the folks in the community and bringing people into this community, because this is gonna be a really nice asset for all of us. I think right now, what CPRD and the committee is asking is for your partnership and not just for CPRD, but for the community, so that we can complete this project. They have cut a lot of money out of it and they wouldn't be here if construction costs were unusually and unreasonably high. So with that, I ask that you really do consider this partnership and look to do something to help with the fee waiver. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Rogers? None? Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate it. Mr. Eugene C. Bell, please.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you. My name is Eugene C. Bell, better known as E.C. Bell. I reside at one-zero-zero-six Madison Drive in Newburgh, Oregon. And I come here to speak in favor of the waiving of the SDC fees for the pool project and relating to the work of CPRD in our community. I have the privilege of being the board president of Newburgh Fish, our local food pantry and emergency relief organization, which has been graciously housed by CPRD for the last eight years in a facility on South Elliott. Conservatively speaking, given the square footage of roughly six, just under seven-thousand square feet that is given to us, conservative rate of just under a dollar a square foot for warehouse space, we're roughly receiving from CPRD to serve the most needy in our community, somewhere in the area of about six-thousand dollars a month subsidy, that we don't have to pay in rent, that we would have to pay elsewhere to be able to provide the services that we do. So roughly in the eight-and-a-half, nine years that we've been able to fill the facility we currently use, that's roughly five-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand dollars that Newburgh Fish has been able to not have to spend on rent, not have to raise and to be able to utilize in some of the darkest times in our great recession, to make sure that we never reduced the amount of poundage, the amount of food we were able to distribute in our community when those needs were at their highest within our community. And that was because of the generosity and the community-oriented service of CPRD. I also have the privilege of serving on the Board of Habitat for Humanity. And again, you well know that, as it's already been mentioned, that Habitat also receives office space and has for many years, thanks to CPRD. In relationship to the exact work of the pool, CPRD is a holistic organization. Its finances, although in different budget categories, all relate to the same bottom line. And the pressures that are put on by this project and the overruns, given the increase in costs that were really not foreseen or could not have been foreseen by anyone, and their already willingness to tailor their project to maximize the resources that they had, means that they're coming to you now as someone who's been responsible with the funds that they were given, responsible with the facilities they already have in their care for people in the community, and are simply asking, again, for those resources to put into the project those things which will benefit our community and has already been listed, community members use that pool. A thousand folks being able to shower. True, not exactly knowing how many folks are able to utilize the pool, but certainly it is there and available. And again, I would certainly encourage any additional ideas to increase people's accessibility to get there. But of course, if they can, those facilities are open to them regardless of their cost to pay. So we wanna encourage that ICCPRD as a wonderful contributor to the work of caring for those most at risk in our community. And this seems to me to be a reasonable request, one that they hope not to make, but other circumstances and their own ability to control their costs have made necessary. And I would encourage you to vote to suspend the SDC fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Johnson?
I would first off like to thank you for being part of our pavement maintenance committee.
Sir, yes, sir.
You've sat through, let me tell you, you deserve a medal for the amount of time that we've spent on that committee. And so the reason I'm asking these questions is because you know what we're facing when it comes to pavement. Now, I look at the, here's what I'm struggling with, okay? I love the pool, I love the Park District, but I also know how short we are on roads and how short we are on road funding. And so tonight, we're sitting here, we're learning about projects that are in the neighborhood of the pool, Elliott and Villa, okay? All those people up on foothills are gonna come down Villa to get to the pool. And that's one of the projects that we're gonna fund with the money from SDCs from this project, from the pool project. So if I don't get, if we don't get the two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars from the pool, to fund those projects, how, where, how, what, a bake sale? I mean, I just, you know, I'm gonna get, so here's the decision we're facing. And we're all grown-ups up here and we're up here by choice.
Yes, sir.
So I'm either gonna get it from the pool, because I didn't waive the fees, or I'm gonna get it from the public, because I'm not fixing the roads. So you sat through the meetings, what, I'm just, I'd love, and obviously you're advocating that we waive the SDCs, so do I put down a street maintenance fee? I mean, where, I'm just, I'm asking you, man, where would you get the money?
Well, so as Councilman knows, the SDCs go to not road maintenance, but additional capacity. There are more state and government funds for capacity building than there are for street maintenance. And so what we're talking about here relates to capacity building. Where the city does have, although I'm sure it's a very competitive market, other pots of money to go to. And the SDC money that's being waived cannot be used, as Councilman knows, to fix potholes. And so part of what we need to do, of course, in the community, and I'm trying to do it on my side of things, is to raise awareness of in what ways your hands are tied in what you can use for the maintenance of existing roads versus what we're doing in expanding capacity on roads and how those pots of money are different and can't be used to do things that they're not originally designated for. And although not completely familiar with the concerns about a lawsuit, which is always unnerving, I take this seat in advocating for the SDC waiver here largely because of my awareness that capacity building is a different problem than street maintenance. And my concerns about maintaining existing streets and wanting to see those funds raised, I don't see as being in conflict with the capacity building, which does have other pots of money that it can go looking into.
Follow on?
Follow on?
So, just so we're clear, a brand-new pool isn't gonna generate more traffic going down Villa, going down Elliott, going down all those streets around the pool? I mean, if it's, I completely understand where you're coming from. And what I'm looking at is the entire system. Yes, absolutely, SDCs can only be used for expanding, but a lot of times when we do projects, Villa Road needed to be fixed, we're just lucky enough to have SDC funds to be able to not only increase capacity, but also fix a road that has needed to be fixed for a long, long time, and we just didn't have money to do it. So what I'm saying is, you're taking away money, you're asking me to take away money from a project that has needed to be done for a long time, and how do you think those neighbors are gonna feel when we go, "Well, you know, it's gonna be another year, year and a half, two years, ten years," you know? And that is best-case scenario if we figure out how to crack the fifteen-million-dollar street hole we're in right now, today, not going into another winter. So that's where I'm kinda struggling, is I really wanna help the pool, but I also have this fiscal responsibility. You know, at home, if I wanna give money to the needy, I usually try to make sure my kids are fed too, so that way we're not a drain on the system. Pay my bills, look at what's left over and then do what I can to be charitable, you know? And, you know, I just, I can't see a way out of this, I can't see a way to crack this nut.
Councilor Bacon, Councilor Esslin?
I know it sounds like we're all pool haters, but we're not. That is not the case. But I wanna make one point. When it comes to CPR, I appreciate what they do for Fish, I appreciate what they do for Habitat. But remember this, they are not CPRD, they are taxpayers' buildings. I mean, it's, what you're saying is, the citizens of Newburgh have gifted these buildings through CPRD and they're working together. So it's not necess, you know, it's not like ADAC has given a warehouse. It is the taxpayers' money that is giving the warehouse. So it's a little different than, you know, they're, yes, it's generous, it's lovely and I so appreciate it, but it's citizen you and me that are actually providing the space. So just to be, you know, a little more exact on it, that the citizens of Newburgh are providing the space for Fish and for Habitat through CPRD.
Can I respond to that?
You may.
It's also the citizens of Newburgh who passed the bond to build the pool and intergovernmental agencies charging each other to get certain work done. It is, in that sense, you're absolutely right, Councilwoman, that it's all the taxpayer money of the folks of Newburgh. The question is, what did they raise the money to do in certain things? And to what degree is the stated purpose for the funds that they've
degree is the stated purpose for the funds that they voted for being maintained? And they voted to build the pool, they voted under good faith to have those taxes, those bonds passed, so that they could have the pool that they wanted to build. It might be slightly awkward to find out that the money they raised for that, their pool is being appreciably changed, one way or another, because another tax entity is not working collaboratively to the same degree. And so, since it is the same pot of money, is the tax collectors, it is that sense that the folks have stated.
Yeah, you don't want to go down there.
Is it that fun?
I think you're well-advised there.
Very good, sir.
Counselor Essen?
To the issue of, which I guess we're saying, what I'm hearing the council say, is, and I'm really not clear about this, it sounds like we were all waiting for this money to pay for these projects that we just funded, I remember that we funded these projects this year. But then I think if we look on the, tonight's agenda, we'll see that there's a roads fees that are going to be addressed, and we're in the process of looking at increasing fees to cover all the roads. And in addition to that, we're looking at our contract with TB Twelton Valley to raise, to turn that over to Twelton Valley, which will, from what I understand, create about $4 million in the city's coffre, but I don't know if that's correct. So, to say that there's no other money than this particular money, when we know on the agenda we're planning to spend money on roads, that our little $300,000 we're talking about here will not do a thing, and the big, big project, because we're talking about $30 million worth, Sanders, $15 to $30 million worth of road projects. So, I agree with the council, it's a very difficult decision to make, to take the money we do have that's sitting in the bank, and that we were apparently counting on rather expectantly to help the pool, but I don't know that I totally agree that there's no other way to go. And I'm not sure that I would even vote for this yet, but I don't think I'll agree totally with the council that there's no other way to go at this time until we have more discussion.
Thank you, EC, appreciate it very much. Mr. Don Clemmons?
Don Clemmons, Superintendent Shalem Park and Rec. District. I've been listening very tentatively, and I can feel the frustration that each of you are feeling. I had the privilege this week to talk to Dr. John D. Crompton, who is a leader in the field. He served on city councils, and he's done empirical science to answer some of the questions that you've been asking. He's done an excellent job. I think, if I can, I'd like to get that in a future date, give it to you, it may help clear up some misconceptions. You know, really, I don't like the word "waived." Invest. Invest in each other, invest in the community. That's what it's about. We have invested in the community when we have been approached. We tried very hard not to pit one against the other. We have lots of needs and concerns and wants, but how do you invest and make people better? I would say that this pool, even if you don't use it, it's a great benefit to you in the community. There's been more than enough research to indicate that, it's not even debatable. I know Joe worked in the field, and he's familiar with Dr. Crompton, probably, maybe, maybe not, Texas A&amp;M. John did a lot of work in that area. But I'm asking you to invest, not only the SDCs, but all fees. Invest the whole thing. Put it in there. It will pay dividends with that investment, I can assure you. There's too many people behind me that's worked awful hard, and we need that investment. The board saw it, they're willing to stick their neck out and invest more than we got. I wish things were totally different, but they're not. So we're going to have to do the best that we can do. And the only way to do that is invest, not waive, not do any of this, but invest in the community and the people, and together, only together. I do not want it to be divisive, separation. We've never worked that way, don't want to work that way. So, again, I think from an economic benefit, the property values in the community will go up. Once this facility is built, people will move here, population will increase, there'll be larger demands, and we'll have to meet them. But we'll meet them together, and with a unified effort. So all I'm asking you is please invest. Thank you.
Counselor McKenney?
Don, I'm grateful you're here. We have a history of investing in one another, and our IGA agreements are evidence of that. You have a bailiwick that you tackle, and you're able to levy taxes in order to help you do that, the same way that we are here. I think the task that's presented to us tonight is how can we see a way forward? You presented your closing argument, ladies and gentlemen of the jury, and so on and so forth there. Some of the very real things that weigh, here's some of the things that keep me up at night. We have a $14 million emergency need right now to take care of payment, and we need an additional $14 million just to keep the roads from turning to rubble, so there's $28 million that we need to just deal with our asphalt, you know, condition here. We don't have all the resources available to us, short of a bond, short of some taxes and everything else that will be required to do that. But there has to be a way forward at this particular point in time without presenting an unreasonable or unexpected burden on family, friends, neighbors, the people that we call citizens here. So we need to be looking forward for some type of feasible remedy to this. I like the idea of investment, but I also have a friend, Mike Raggedale, in the back of the building there too, he's dealing with very real downtown issue here, and the council is faced with four or five things that are all going to demand money at the same time. The competition for those funds are going to be immense. I'm sorry if this sounds a little bit like deliberation, but I'm hoping that other members of your party who will give testimony to us tonight is that we understand that we're faced with a monumental problem. It's just not coming up with another million and a half to complete a pool. We're talking about thousands and thousands and thousands of times that, or whatever. This is a reasonable panel of persons, we will see some way forward here, but just like we've gone to department heads and said, "All right, you, you, and you, you got to cut 20% right now." We want to know what that's going to be at the next council meeting, you know? We went through a very terrible recession, we did it without trying to hemorrhage money, and we also went to fire department, police department, said, "You have to work with us, none of you will lose your job." But there was some very, very real sacrifice that happened there. So unfortunately, for the positions that we're in, we're dealing with a lot of the sacrifice, but I realize that we have IGAs, we have a history of investment, we have lots of ways to make sure that we can go forward here, but I'm afraid that your board has some significant cuts to maybe make without hemorrhaging your project there. But I know it would be ill-advised for me to take funds that are not mine and have to levy additional fund for friends, neighbors, citizens that I live with there. So, I'll help you, you help me, together we'll all help ourselves, you know, through this project. But if we were just dealing with the pool, that'd be one thing, but we're dealing with major issues every time we get together, and there's only one solution, and it's millions and millions of dollars.
Thank you. I would say, having lived in the community since 1985, this is not the first time I've heard this, and it won't be the last time. But together, with all those people out there, we will get there. I think where we have problems is when we start setting and pitting projects against. The pool, the community spoke, we're trying to listen, and I hope you'll listen too.
Thank you, appreciate it. Mr. Alan Brown?
My name is Alan Brown. I'm a retired attorney, I practiced law here in Newburgh for 42 years. In this, in my practice, I represented the Shalem Park and Recreation District, George Fox College, Friendsview Manor, and went through probably, I think maybe six, construction bond issues such as the Park District. And I'm here to tell you, it's a difficult process, because when you start at going out for the bond, particularly with, going to the public, you know that the end result is going to be two and a two and a half years down the road. So you have to estimate, you don't quite have an idea what the facility's going to be like, and so as the bond goes out, and then the market changes, in all these projects I've been involved with, there's always been a shortfall, there's never been enough money, and you have to come back and redesign or look for other funds. In this particular bond, as part of the bond measure, the, it was a requirement that there'd be an oversight committee to manage the formation of the contract, the negotiating of the bids, and the construction. And three people were on that committee, I was, I'm on that committee, former city finance manager Kathy Try, she's on that committee, and Terry Emery, an accountant's on that committee. And so we have been oversight all this time through the whole process. And I take issue with, Mr. Essen, you said you did, that we didn't do a good job. We watched the whole process, and in my opinion, an excellent job was done on all the stages on estimating, evaluating, cutting, and trying to get as best we can. As has been pointed out already, there is just an issue of this extreme inflation that has caused a problem here, and it's not really anybody's fault, or anybody's not falling down, falling down on the job. In listening to the comments here, I'm surprised that you are, have already sort of banked these SDCs for these three road projects. When these cost estimates came in, our group looked at, "What can we do with these, with this excess?" And one of the things was, "We'll go out and to the voters and ask for more money, and put this whole project on hold." If we did that, what are you going to get the money for your streets? So, we took the approach that we would try and get as lean as we possibly can on what the project would be, and quite frankly, we had an estimation, maybe a ill-placed estimation, that you guys would work with us on reducing some of these fees, because as has been pointed out, we're all serving the same public, we're all a government entity, what works for us works for you, and that you have an ability to help us out. And so, the option of working with what we have with some help from you, in our opinion, was better than postponing everything. It would probably just be more costs, and you wouldn't get your streets done in any event. In answer to your question about, "Well, what do we do about these streets?", I've been here for 40 years, and Deborah Road, Villa Road, they haven't changed. I would say that they could probably go on another three or four years till the project is done and the benefits come from it. On the issue of low income, since I moved here 40 years ago, I swim three days a week. You're missing the boat, I'm not attending, going to the pool. I'm...
I don't like water, so it's nothing personal.
Well, there's an exercise room and everything, and as part with Medicare now, you have the Silver and Fit, and since that has been in place, the seniors that come to the pool for exercise is just quadrupled. And I probably, more so than anybody here, can testify who comes and uses that pool. And there are, I swim at noon, and there's people in there all the time coming in just to shave and shower, and I don't get into their personal business, but I know that's what they're there for. The Park District also has daycare for people who can't afford it, it's all on a floating scale, so...
Sit with her, please.
Anyway, I would encourage you to waive the fees, it seems like a reasonable thing to do, and it's an issue that needs to be addressed now, where your other roads and your other development issues can have the luxury of time in figuring that out. Thank you.
I'm going to waive one of my rules, I have two requests that came in after we started this, and I'm going to go ahead and honor these this evening, but normally our rules say that you need to let us know in advance of when we start a discussion, that we know who's going to be speaking to it in advance. So with that, I'm going to call on a Jennifer Parento.
Parento.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're not big with names today. You're not big with the names today.
No, I'm not.
So, I'm Jennifer Parento, and I and my husband have lived in Newburgh since 1980. We currently are at 610 Lewis Court, and we survived 2008. How we survived is a story for another time. The job that I have, I work for the Oregon Department of Education, I'm a child nutrition specialist, I travel across the entire state for reviews. I've been in a number of communities that have pool facilities, and I've been in two that I wanted to speak to you about that didn't get the community support, and I don't feel that from the city council, I feel your frustration, I wish, I wish I won the Powerball, and we could just all do what we need to do. There are two districts, two places that I have been, where one is Mapleton, and that pool now sits empty and degrading. pool now sits empty and degrading because they did not create a park and rec district to bond and keep the pool going. The people who were in a private organization to keep that pool going granted it to the school district, and the school district in and of itself is one of our highest free and reduced needy school districts in the state. Hence, their budget could not sustain that. In talking with the principal, who is there, who grew up in that community, who grew, she learned how to swim, she became a lifeguard, she learned how to manage the pool, no child drowned in the days that the pool was going because the pool was going. And now that sits empty and vacant. So that's one place. And then the other place is Crestwell School District, Crestwell. The last time I was there in their pool, they had not had the money to even paint the walls or paint the bottom of the pool. And I know our pool is getting down to the very last years of its usage. We're, by my calculation, and I can stand corrected, I think we're at year 48, and the lifetime of the pool is 50 years. Rough calculation, if the $700,000 was waived for the pool and divided that by 50 years, it's a $14,000 investment by the city council for the next 50 years. So I respect you in this difficult decision that you have. I want to say I have been one of the pool users for years, and it is a great asset. And I also hear the call for our community to do more for our homeless folks. So thank you for your time.
Any questions or comments for our person? None appearing? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Mr. Rick Rogers? And you should know better.
I know, sorry, my apologies. My apologies. Yeah, no, right. Good evening, Mayor Andrews, city councilor, city staff. Just a couple of comments, and maybe I should list my affiliations to start with. Habitat for Humanity has been mentioned, that's one of my affiliations. I also serve currently on the Long Range Financial Planning Council or Commission for the City and the Citizens Rate Review Committee. So that being said, I hope that shows that I do honor a dollar. The frugality of Habitat for Humanity, the Citizens Rate Review Committee, or the Long Range Financial Planning Committee, that's really what we're all looking at. But I think, Councilor Bacon, one thing on this question of need. And I think you know that that's something that I follow fairly closely. If we have, 50% of our students are on free and reduced meals, they're low to very low income. As far as I know, there's one place to learn to swim in this community. So there's not a country club here, as far as I know. So if you're going to learn to swim, you're going to learn to swim at the pool. And so chances are, 50% of the kids that learn to swim are low to very low income.
That's not worth trying.
Why?
I don't want to get in our picture.
Okay, but no, the point is that there's, I guess we could say, well, that if you're low income, then you don't learn to swim.
Could possibly.
Well, but then there's no place to do it. So if we want to make an outreach to kids that are low income, then that's the only place to do it. So it does fit that the people who use the pool would be low income. I can't get around that. The other thing, from my experience, I was, as my wife testified earlier, we spent many, many days in the pool. And honestly, although I do like water, I never went in, even though my kids swam for 12 years or something. But I also served as treasurer of Shalem Water Polo, and my kids all swam. With that, I know that we never once denied a kid based on not having money. So that anybody who wanted to participate in swimming or water polo, it was done. All right. Finally, the question, again, it was mentioned earlier, but the questions of roads, and again, this is from sitting on the committees that I sit on, the roads didn't deteriorate yesterday, right? And I think what, truthfully, we know there's crises in every way, right? And we've got a whole list of projects that, from I and I on to road maintenance and everything else. But I think what the folks from the pool and CPRD are really asking from you is to show the partnership, that they're in a tough way right now. And they're asking you to demonstrate the partnership that has, that really makes Newburgh what it is. And whether that's Parks and Rec giving Habitat office space, or you all even making a token gesture to work with them to get through what's a very difficult situation. And I still think you are honoring 63% of the residents of the community. Thank you. I hope you at least consider that. Okay, thank you.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Rogers?
I promise I'm not anti-pool. The citizens of Newburgh gave you $18 million.
Mm-hmm.
And 19.9.
19.9.
Million dollars, that's what the 63% of the, and you had a pretty picture, and that's what they voted for. I put my name on that. My name was on your lid. I believed in the pool, even though I don't use the pool. My family doesn't use the pool. I voted yes on it. I pay my taxes on the pool. It's not, I'm not anti-pool. And you know, and the kids from Edwards Elementary used to go over there and take swimming lessons because they were, but that program doesn't exist anymore, not any fault of CPRD, that was a school district decision. And my only angst is that I, the 43%, or 40 whatever percent didn't vote for it, you know, they're also, you know, they're also constituents of both of us and pay the taxes. So there's that. 63% did, I was one of them, I want you to have the pool. How we get to that is challenging. I mean, I sat on the oversight board with the school district bond, making sure we, you know, and we charged them all their fees. It's a different time, they were lucky, fortunate enough to build during recession. I want to come up with an answer for you. I absolutely do. But I also have to have an answer for the city's obligations. I want to be a partner. We partner with people all the time, we partner with Habitat, we partner all the time. I just have to have something that I can say to the people who don't use the pool, people like me who even voted yes, to say, okay, I did this for them, and it's going to be okay for you because we're going to, what's the answer?
I mean, I can't, obviously, I can't speak for Parks and Rec, but I mean, it would seem to me if.
As a citizen.
As a citizen, okay. As a citizen, what I would say is that Parks and Rec was in a situation that could diminish the asset for the community, right? The city council felt it important enough to make an additional investment, as Don mentioned, towards something that we believe has a greater value, right? And I understand, it is, of course, the difficult trade-off, but I think it does show that the city values this asset, and that that is vitally, it's vitally important for the community. And I think that's what it does say. You know, anytime we attempt to, like you, as you well know, raise people's taxes, talk about their water bill, yes, you know, it does, it hurts, right, of course. But if, as a citizen, if you wanted to make sure, I would ask Parks and Rec to say, listen, we want you, in conjunction with the city, to reach out to every one of these kids that can't afford to be at the pool and make sure they know how to swim. And that's it. If that's the promise that you want for whatever money it is, then I think we could all sleep well, including Councilor McKinney at night, because we know that there are not kids that don't know how to swim just because they don't have money. And I think that if that's the promise that you want, I would ask them to give it to you. But I mean, I think it is, at some point, it does become a safety question too. And Denise, you know.
I know.
The last people that we want not to learn how to swim are the ones that can least afford it.
We had some kid drown who couldn't swim.
Well, exactly right. Then we can't not let the pool happen. That's why the pool was originally, that's why the first bond came through decades ago. That's why Parks and Rec was formed, was for fear of the safety. And again, I don't want to get too melodramatic, but honestly, if you want to cull CPRD to that, if you want to tell them, you guys better find a way to record who comes in the door, I'm sure they could do it. I can't, again, speak for them, I'm just a citizen, but there you go. Anyway, so that's my two cents.
Mr. McKinney?
You forgot to mention affordable housing.
Well, I did get it in this time. The next time, I'll get that in there. I will, I'll get that in there too.
You're to be commended on your remarks. I grew up in a school district, the Anaheim Union High School District, and every kid that ever attended a school in Anaheim learned to swim.
Right.
They were also the first with sex education and all kinds of other things, you know, went along that way. But there are certain things that we do, and we do it well. We do a library, yet we have people 70, 80 years old that live in Newburgh, have never been in the Newburgh library. It's not about whether or not we have a pool and it's used or it's not used, it's a recognized civic asset, all right? So now we employ our energies on making sure that we can facilitate all of the things that we need to do and do it in a reasonable way, so that when we're asked the tough questions, we need to be able to present, you know, some type of reasonable explanation.
Amen.
And I'm sorry that my sleepless nights don't matter.
No, 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 I know, I feel for you.
Because I just mentioned pavement, that's the one o'clock to two o'clock.
All right, well, don't start thinking about water.
Three to four, and four to five.
Well, don't think about water, that'll keep you from four to six.
Your testimony is very, very valid. And Denise, I'm sorry you don't use the pool, but I'm also sorry you're afraid of water.
I am, I'm desperately afraid of water.
The point is, is that we have a number of civic assets that need to continue to be utilized, energized, and made possible. We're probably not going to be able to make that decision here tonight along this way here. But we all need to be able to dedicate ourselves to the task of making sure that there's some type of reasonable solution that can come there. There was just one other thing that I heard tonight that was a little bit distressing.
Is this a poll?
Yes, it is. Is that it was remarked that in one of the questions, it was referred to as that we were banking on that money. That's probably a misnomer. The city of Newburgh has a known schedule and fee system across the board for whatever the project is. The board members know it and everything else. It's not that we're banking on your pool bond to be able to accomplish something else. We're very good about not commingling money in this particular town along the way. But I'm very appreciative of all of the testimony that I've been able to listen tonight. And I hope that we will tie this up in a nice package and put a nice bow on it and be able to accomplish what we need to do along with myriad of other things.
Teach the children to swim. Allen Brown, I do appreciate the senior programs over there. The health and the well-being of our seniors and aging well is extremely important to me because I am aging faster than I like to admit to. And teaching children to swim in my neighborhood is extremely important. I live on the river. All 78% of my families are in poverty, there's no transportation issues. And if I could figure that out, I would, and I'm trying, but I am not anti-pool, I am not anti, I'm just short of cash. And have to find a way to figure out how to justify lacking cash. I mean, we've had, we've had issues too. We had a road built, DOT gave us a number and came back, Jay, I want to say it was like $600,000 more than what we originally gave them. And I threw a temper tantrum, a big temper tantrum, over it because we didn't have that money, but we had to pay it. So it's not like I don't understand your struggles, it's not like I don't understand your desire to have the pool. I desire the pool. I just have to find a way that I can make the justification to give up projects that are of great importance, maybe not as important to you as the pool. And I need to make that work in my brain, because that's who I'm responsible to.
Yeah.
Okay?
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Rogers? None appearing? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You've heard the testimony of a number of people that are asking you to take a particular action. I have a question for staff, if I may. One of the possibilities, I'm needing a sugar hit, so I got candy in my mouth, is the possibility of deferral on the SDCs. And the question came up, is a lien feasible for the Shalem Aquatic Fitness Center, is general obligation bond, which is bond covenants, and/or does the city have the authority to do a zero-interest loan, or is there some nominal interest rate required? I want to talk about the interest rate. Can the city council consider a deferral with either a very low or a no-interest rate?
We believe yes.
Say again, please?
We believe yes, you can.
Either?
For a lower, you know, .001 interest rate.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate that. So we're up to deliberations, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure of the council, Councilor McKinney.
Well, it should be noted that, at least the councils that I've been on, when it comes to fees, SDCs, which I refer to as STDs, is that there have been builders and projects in the past that we have adjusted those rates, we've adjusted to different things to make sure that they arrived at a satisfactory conclusion, you know, somewhere. So we are, part of our history has been able to achieve that goal. This, here's my personal opinion only, is that this particular question tonight deserves further consideration and maybe some specific recommendations from staff if it's a combination of things to where we help achieve something in terms of modifying the fees, the rates, and/or a low-interest loan or whatever it is to help here. But I don't know if we're prepared, I don't know if I'm prepared tonight to sit here at the diet to try and figure out what that is, but I would be very interested in seeing how this discussion matures and leads somewhere to where we're presented with a request for council action that's more well-adjusted than what the packet said, you know, for us tonight. So I'm interested in looking for something better than trying to move on this particular RCA tonight.
Mr. Mayor. Councilor Esson.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. I'm sorry to interrupt, and I know we've been going on a long time, but just following through with our hearing format, we have.
This is not a hearing. This is not a hearing.
Okay.
Point of order.
And I withdraw that.
Thank you. Councilor Esson, Councilor Corey, Councilor Woodruff, Councilor Johnson.
I'm thinking that I find it interesting that we've already spent the money towards projects, and that there's no other money than that money to commit those, to complete those projects. When I know later on tonight, we're going to be talking about where we're going to get the money for a hell of a lot more than what, excuse my friend, than what we've got in front of us. So I can't believe that there's not a way to make this work if we wanted to make it work. Now, whether we wanted to make it work or not is another issue regarding my statement that, you know, okay, Mr. Bond, get enough money, don't come to us later and say, hey, will you help us out? But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't, you know, if this is something we want for the community. And my point was that apparently, they've already come with a million and a half cut. And my point was that apparently they've already come with a million and a half cut just to come to ask for this amount. So it's not a million and a half they needed. They needed three million to really do it right. And they've cut it back to a million and a half. And then I guess they're actually asking us for... Is it 300,000? Is that it? And so the question is whether or not we can come up with 300,000 or maybe even come up with a loan. So that's my question. I'm kind of with Councilman McKinney. I would like some time or I'd like to have some staff. Staff put some thinking into what could we come up with that would be reasonable and still not, still answer Denise's issues. You know, so I guess that... I would love to see us at least try to make this happen because frankly, it's a regional park district. They could have gone to Dundee, and Dundee would charge them heck of a lot less money versus SDCs. But they came here because they wanted to be part of our community. And so I don't think we should take the attitude that, well, you know, we don't want to do anything for you because you screwed up. On the other hand, I think you're right. I think, you know, where are we going to get this money? Now, I always thought the SDCs had to pay for themselves and whatever projects were coming up should be paid. There should already be money in the bank or in the account to pay for future SDCs. And I didn't realize we were waiting for the particular SDC now, and that's another issue entirely. And I'm concerned, that caused me some real concern, that we're saying that we were counting on this project to get the money to pay for a project that's currently ready to start, assuming that this was going to go in. So I guess the bottom line of what I'm saying is I'm agreeing with Councilor McKinney. If there's a way to go, I'd love to find it and maybe the staff could come back with something.
Councilor Corey?
Yeah, so I... This is not a question of whether the pool's valuable or closing the pool, in my opinion. I go back to what Don Clements had said. This is an investment. So CPRD is making an investment. The city could be making an investment if we finance, which has already been mentioned, and that is a possibility. I'm not ready to make a decision tonight at all on this. But I think CPRD and staff need to get together and talk about the possibility of some sort of reduction possibly and/or financing the fees so that you don't have to come up with them upfront when the project's being built. I think that is a very reasonable way that the city can work with you. You're asking the city to work with you. That's what I would suggest, is that that negotiation time happens. I don't think it's happened yet. I haven't heard anything about it happening. So to me, that is the best way to solve this whole thing. We do, the city council, and I think the taxpayers have said they want the pool, so that's not an issue. But the city council is on board for the pool. It's just we need to hear something, you know, full waiver? I don't know. Full fee? I don't know. But we don't have any other option right now. So I think negotiation can take place and make this thing work. And as Don said, we all invest together that way. So I think the problem, one of the biggest problems we have with waiving the SDCs is that we don't see that it's benefiting low to moderate income families in that... Over fifty percent use... You know, there's no proof of that. It's just, well, the schools do that. So I think waiving the SDCs is not a good request anyway, you know, for that reason. That's it. That's all I got.
Councilor Woodruff?
Thank you. I don't know if this is helpful at all, but just taking notes during all the comments. And I really want to thank everybody for your comments. I know several people left already. But it really helped add a lot of depth to my thinking and I think to all of our conversation and thinking tonight. So thank you, everybody, for your wide variety of comments and experiences. Just a couple of questions that I think I kind of distilled for myself through the evening is how...
To whom are you directing the questions?
The universe.
Yeah. Is that okay? Yes. Yes. I'm not expecting an answer. This is...
Very good.
Is that okay? Thank you. I have two and then just one comment. Thank you. One is just how can this money best serve the community? It's money that both our agencies need. How can it best serve our community that we all serve together? Also, can the city recognize the pool as a community asset? Can the city partner with CPRD? If so, how? And then, as Mike just said, my biggest hesitation also is with that criterion too about the low income, that it's... And CPRD just doesn't really have a mechanism for tracking that. But that's one of our requirements. And reading through the information before the meeting, that was one of my biggest hesitations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Johnson?
I'm with the gang here. We're probably not going to make a decision tonight, but I am going to make a motion. I would move to have staff look at what our legal obligations are for those three projects that would be impacted by the SDCs from the pool project, namely... SDC. As far as the Elliott Road project goes, there's an exposure there. And then come back to us with an amount of these SDCs that we could potentially either waive or give us the option of a financial package that would work both for CPRD and the city as far as as low interest rate as we can get. So that way, when we come back, we can discuss whether we want to waive those fees or we want to finance them for X amount of years, whatever works for CPRD and ourselves. In addition to that, I would hope that CPRD would look at other areas where we are partnering with them and complete some of those obligations that I've brought up in the past. And I'll be as... That's as vague as I'm going to be about that. And I think that if we truly want to have a partnership, I think that would be the best way to go. So that way, we can make a decision that not only meets our obligations but also allows us to keep the amenity that is a pool. And trust me, if the city had this pool, we'd be in much dire straits than we are now. So I see it as a jewel of Newburgh. I'd like to keep it that way. I'd love to see the new pool built. And let's... I'm with the rest of the council. Let's figure out a way in the next two weeks or four weeks or however long it takes to partner with the Park and Rec District. Is that clear or is that too muddled?
That's too muddled.
Okay. So this is what I want. I want to know what our legal obligations are for the three projects that would be impacted by the transportation SDCs.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Wait a minute. We don't have a motion yet.
But that's what I'm moving. I'm clarifying my motion.
Are you wanting to table the further discussion?
Yes, I want to table further. Let's table further.
Move to table with these instructions for staff.
Okay, great.
Okay, try that.
Okay. So I move to table with these further instructions for staff. One, to let us know what our legal obligations are for the three SDC projects that were outlined in the staff report. And then number two, come back with some options after talking with, negotiating with CPRD regarding either waiving the balance of those fees or finding a finance package that is legal.
Or a combination?
Or a combination thereof, so that we can have a menu the next meeting to go, this is what we're going to do. Do you want a date certain? About two weeks or...
It might take a while.
Okay.
I think we need to... Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So now to the discussion. And I'm asking staff, and I think I'm going to ask also CPRD official, is there anything that is pressing that we have to make a decision right now? Hello? So we'll let CPRD answer on their end and then I'll staff. Donald? There's nothing pressing right now?
There's nothing...
You can move ahead without this answer right now.
Okay. The only thing that's pressing is we need to get a building permit. Without a building...
We haven't gotten to the permits yet.
Okay. As long as this doesn't interfere with our building...
Again, we haven't even discussed the permits yet, Donald.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think, if I may, Doug Rox again. I think where Mr. Clements was going is that in order to pull building permits for the project, they would have to pay all of their fees and their SDCs in order to get their permit. So if they were, say, looking at trying to pull their permit in the next two weeks, they would have to pay all of the fees that are in place at that point in time. If the council at a subsequent meeting chose to reduce, waive, finance, or whatever that package might look like, if it was a waive, then we'd have to do a refund. If it was a reduction, we'd have to do a refund. If it was a financing package, we'd have to do a refund. I mean, it's internal paperwork. It's working with our finance director to be able to... I think that's where Mr. Clements was going.
We... Go ahead to the table.
Push the button.
The longer we wait for our building permit, the cost is going up. So we need to get that building permit. If the city would allow us, we're committed to paying. I mean, it's not... We can pay something, whatever you guys want to do. If you want us to pay it all and then refund it or whatever, it doesn't matter to us. But we just want to make sure that that building permit, that's crucial because every day it's going.
I have a question.
Councilor Bacon.
Can we defer it? Can we defer the fees for now and still issue the permit?
Wrong side. Okay. So Mayor and Council. I mean, we can work on, you know, a form of installment, you know, that, like anyone would do, buying some furniture. And it might be one, so much money to start, shows the good faith, and then we figure out what the final solution is. I would hope that your cost isn't continuing to go up because you're going to sign... No, meaning that you've got some kind of contract here that locks a price in. We can clearly negotiate and we can do it. We could be back here with a time certain, no longer than, you know, not next meeting to the meeting after, and we'll meet with them. I think we have some ideas and I think we know what the direction is.
First meeting in December?
Second meeting is.
Second meeting.
Second meeting in December.
Well, let's see. This is...
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest, if I may, City Manager, the second...
Mr. Rex?
December 19th would work, given if we try to get on December 5th, I basically have to have a report written by next Wednesday. And I don't think that's going to happen. December 19th gives us a little bit of breathing room.
I could declare this an emergency and get the board to pass a resolution to give you, Joe, committing to the fees. We've done that in the past. We had a little controversy about that. And we went ahead because the board passed a resolution saying we'll do that and we'd be glad to do that, if that works.
Yep.
All right. You heard the motion, and I'm looking at my city attorney. Does that motion still stand? Or the content of that motion? Or do we need to consider a friendly amendment? I didn't write it down.
I didn't either, other than I think that the motion actually was just to table until a specific date or to postpone to a date certain.
And the date certain would be the second meeting in December.
I believe the rest of it was not the main part of the motion, but it was an explanation of the purpose of the motion. So although we've had a lot of discussion, I think the motion's still pending.
Thank you. Good clarification. City Manager?
And Mayor, as I understand what the motion is and council direction would be, that we meet with CPRD staff. We look at all kinds of options, but specifically with the, what the impact is on the three projects that we have. Are there any legal issues with any of those? Several of them have been talked about this evening. I don't think we're going to have big challenges there, just laying them out a little more clearly. But then it's also, is it a matter of waiving fees, some portion of that, waiving all of them, or of financing and see what works for both? I think we have a couple other options that we'll talk to them about and stuff, you know, exchange of services or something like that.
Thank you. Does the council understand the motion? The question was, it'll come back in an RCA. Thank you, Councilor McKinney. Your mic next time, please. You've heard the discussion. Is there any further discussion? Are you prepared to vote on a motion? The motion is to table. It's already been seconded. Question's been called for. Are you prepared to vote? I hear no further discussion. All in favor of the motion to table signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Now you have before you the next business item, which is Resolution 2016. Three, 2016, 334. There's been a request for a short break. I will honor that request. We will reconvene at 25 till.
While volunteering for the city.
I declare potential conflict of interest in this matter. I could benefit financially from this decision if I were injured while volunteering for the city.
Back to you, Anna.
As I said, this is purely a housekeeping issue. You've always been covered for any injury occurring as you volunteer, just as all of our volunteers are covered.
And your recommendation?
My recommendation is that you pass the resolution.
You have, you see the, the coverage of the resolution, which has under paragraph one of be it resolved, you have A, B, C, D, E, F in that area. Where is the, I have one correction before I'm going to call for a vote. You have in here boards and commissions, but we also have committees. Should that be added and where? I'm looking at you and the city attorney.
Um, could I ask a clarifying question? So the committees being ad hoc?
Well, yeah, they're volunteers and we do have, um, we did have a two, uh, traffic safety commission, library board. Citizens' rate review is a committee by ordinance. We have standing and ad hocks. So where do, I don't mind boards, commissions and committees, but where do you put that? Because you're excluding committees.
That, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, city attorney.
Uh, Trumanstown's city attorney. Uh, that would be the appropriate, appropriate place to put it. Uh, but I would, if the council was intending to extend the coverage to ad hoc committees as well, then I would suggest you say committees, including ad hoc committees to make it, uh, more clear.
May I ask then of staff why we would not cover our ad hocks if they're volunteering?
I, I can't think of a good reason why the council wouldn't do that.
Councilor Bacon, then Councilor McKinney.
I'm just gonna.
Councilor McKinney?
You're suggesting that added to B three?
B, yes, B.
B three? It'd become B three?
Well, it could be B three, yeah. Standing and ad hoc, committee standing and ad hoc.
They all have agendas and?
Yeah, and their public meetings, yes. Councilor Corey?
I was just gonna make a motion.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
Okay, um, I would like to make a motion that we approve resolution twenty sixteen dash thirty-three twenty-two as amended with standing and ad hoc committees under B three.
Committees and ad hoc.
Yes, standing and ad hoc committees.
Second?
Has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution two thousand sixteen thirty-three twenty-two as amended by adding language to one B, adding a third item under one B to be standing and ad hoc committees. The question's been called for, is there any further discussion? None appearing, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign?
I am abstaining.
You have to tell me why.
Because there's potential conflict of interest, I'm gonna abstain.
Oh, I do not accept that. I do not, the chair does not accept that as an abstention. We all have.
Okay, then aye. I don't want to get hit by, aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. We may have an opening on the council people. Thank you, Anna. Nothing is easy. And now, now we move to the, um, a motion to clarify language and/or to table street utility fee discussion. Who's carrying this? I don't have any, I don't have any RCA or anything else on this.
Don't have an RCA?
I have no RCA on this. Okay.
Would you like my copy, Mayor?
No.
The RCA?
I'll work without it, thank you. I have everything else but. Well, you'll be finished before I can find it on that damn thing. That's a little editorial here, but. Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. Oh, we have.
Carn gave it's right. It's not whole punch.
It's not whole punched.
All right, let's go.
Mayor Andrews, City Council Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. Tonight this evening, I have Tony Roos with me, consultant from Kittleson and Carn Hoffman, our city engineer. And, um, we're going to move through a PowerPoint presentation in a moment. And, uh, I know you've been busy tonight listening to other things, so, uh, we'll sort of give you a hurry-up version of all this. Um, I just want to give you a quick recap before we jump into the PowerPoint. In two thousand fourteen, the summer fourteen, we, uh, council adopted a consultant report that calculated the pavement condition index for the city. It was a seventy-three out of a hundred, which was a s- a strong C. Um, they estimated the backlog of street repairs were about fifteen million dollars. In a work session last fall, I went over all the different pavement types of how we maintain pavements and, uh, that, I also went back over the two thousand fourteen pavement report. And then, uh, council, uh, gave me a consensus to just maintain the PCI. Let's don't improve our pavement condition index, but let's just get to a point where we fund a program to, uh, just maintain. Um, in, in January of this year, um, I went through a bunch of different funding options with you. We lean more towards at that time is adopting some sort of street utility fee on the municipal services statement and look at a gas tax and then possibly a bond major down the road. We realize that there, we're behind so far that we need multiple funding sources at this point. Just one funding source as, as a gas tax isn't going to solve the problem. Um, in May, we brought Tony and Kittleson on board to assist us. Um, in July, we had, uh, had an ad hoc committee we put together and, um, it consisted of residents, uh, business owners, nonprofits. Don Clements was, was on that. And the committee has met four times, uh, to listen to different types of models of how to fund a street utility fee. Um, and we'll have some more information about that later in the PowerPoint presentation. So, um, I, I think we'll get going here. So the first slide here is this, we have a maintenance challenge. In, uh, two thousand and two thousand thirteen, there is, um, some public opinion polls done by the city and street repairs, um, rated a medium, a medium to high import, importance on both surveys. Um, and so, and council, I was looking at some reports from two thousand four. This has been worked on for a long time and, um, a few meetings ago, yeah, we were given a direction to accelerate, go faster, you know, move quicker here. So, um, we're here tonight, um, to give you s- uh, some additional information. And then obviously there's a couple motions later on to either table, uh, this whole discussion or provide us direction to, uh, better formulate an ordinance. So Tony is going to talk some more about our maintenance needs.
Good evening. So.
Identify yourself, please.
I'm Tony Roos with Kittleson Associates and, uh, and a resident of Newburgh as well. So happy to be on this project. Newburgh has sixty-five and a half paved miles. The value of this, of that pavement in the city is approximately a hundred and fifty million dollars. If we were to repave all of the roads right now, rebuild them from scratch. That doesn't count the curbs and the sidewalks, that's just the blacktop. Like Jay said, it was done in two thousand, the initial report done in two thousand fourteen put us at about a seventy-three. In the two years since, with the lack of maintenance we've been doing on our roadways or the, the unfunded maintenance that we've been doing, uh, that PCI has slipped down to a sixty-eight. So it's over two years, we're seeing that number dropping quickly. Maintenance challenge we have is the different types of roads. Uh, we can skip through that one. This, the slide shows you what the different classifications of roadways are and how they relate to the appearance of the roadways. Page, this page, uh, five, shows five of our streets in Newburgh and where they're at. And you can see if you compare the page four to page five, that we're somewhere in between the fair to poor on some of our streets. Uh, some are even worse than what you're seeing on ninth.
I did say goodbye. Carn Hoffman, city engineer. So current funding, we get, um, currently about one point three million dollars a year from state gas taxes. About five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, um, are spent strictly on pavement. That includes direct and indirect cost of labor costs, um, sweeping the streets, um, putting the, the, the stuff in the pothole itself, that labor cost and those types of things. The rest of the money is spent on other capital projects, um, street lights and street energy. So all those street lights, um, come out of the gas tax funding and that's about two hundred and eighty to three hundred thousand dollars a year. And then we also maintain a three hundred thousand dollar contingency. So as you can see, that, uh, five hundred and twenty thousand is what we spend generically on pavement every year. And, and this is the, so one of the things that came up earlier, I'll throw this in here really quick, is the SDCs. We cannot spend SDC dollars on pavement maintenance. Pavement maintenance is, is a maintenance activity and SDCs can only be spent on capacity-related projects. So one thing to keep in mind as, as we're going through and looking at the funding opportunities.
So that report done in two thousand fourteen and updated in two thousand sixteen, estimate we need about two point five million dollars a year to maintain our PCI at seventy-three. Program is a little bit of a, a voodoo box. You put it in, we plug the projects in and it gets us as close as we can to that seventy-three of the two point five million dollars of results. In twenty twenty-six and ten years, at two and a half million a year, we could have our PCI up, up seventy-eight, within a rounding error of the seventy-three that our target was for. If we do nothing and continue on the same path that we're down, going down of no funding or limited funding, our PCI is going to slip down to a fifty-two. There's another option out there, if we increase the spending two point nine million a year, we could touch every road in the city and make all roads black. The two point five million dollars a year, there's still some roads that would be red and unimproved, but that would continue, as the program continued down the road, we would pick those roads up. But we're looking at what happens in ten years and, and that's where we'd be.
So when we, so when we started talking to the ad hoc committee about this project, one of the things was, as, as Jay mentioned, that there's no way that we can, um, raise this amount of money from one funding source. So we started to look at what are, what were our options? We have obviously our five hundred and twenty thousand dollars of our existing money that could be spent. And then we looked at the potential of a transportation utility fee. We started with saying, okay, let's raise half of it with the transportation utility fee and then the possibility of a local gas tax. So what you see on this slide is kind of, kind of where we started, um, talking about the numbers for, um, to, to work through, um, where these revenues would come from. So a little bit about transportation utility fees, how they work. They, they are put on the monthly, um, municipal services statement. They're generally charged to every, anybody who gets a water bill is, is the short answer for that. And there's a lot of different ways that, um, they can be modeled. Generally, there's four kind of broad categories. There's a flat fee, so everybody gets charged the same amount, no matter how big, how small, those types of things. There's a flat fee within class. So that's, um, all, all grocery stores get charged the same amount, no matter if they're big or small or all, um, clothing stores gets charged the same amount, no matter where they are. Um, there's a variable fleet fee within class, excuse me. So that's a little bit more complicated. And it's, uh, so you have, um, more classes, but they're still flat fees based on the size of the building and the trip generation. And then the most complicated one is a trip generation, um, model. And that means that everybody in the city would have their own individual rate. And we would have pages and pages and pages upon, um, how that gets calculated. So at the bottom of this, it, there's a kind of a, gives you an idea of the example, um, monthly charges by fee type, depending on which model you go through or go with. So the proposal, um, and what the ad hoc committee looked at were all of these different options. They looked at, um, what made the most sense for the city. And they, um, their proposal was that we would go with a variable fee within class. And so that would be based on the type of business, the size of the business, the square footage. And/or in certain instances, like schools, it's based on students, uh, parks, it's acres. You know, there's a couple of others, um, modifiers there. And then single-family versus multifamily residences. And again, there's some example rates by class, um, um, at the bottom of that, um, slide there. Um, and then the other piece again that we've been talking about, um, is a local gas tax. And, um, the city council indicated that they were interested in exploring this. We could go on the ballot as early as spring of twenty seventeen.
Say again?
We could go on the ballot if the council so chooses, at the earliest is spring of twenty seventeen. And, and just for the perfect, purposes of discussion, as we were moving forward, we're assuming a six cents tax per gallon would raise seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars per year. And then you also see a list of other jurisdictions that have, um, gas, local gas taxes and what their rates are.
So, uh, part of our public outreach, uh, efforts have been the ad hoc committee, uh, four meetings with them, uh, continual website updates, um, newsletter articles, uh, city council updates to you, mayor's cabinet presentation, we had an open house, um, online open house. We extended the open house that we had here online to receive some additional comments. Went to the traffic safety commission, Rotary meeting, city clubs. There's a few of these that are s- next week, yeah. So, um, if you go to the RCA, um, on page ten, it has all those dates in there of the various things that we've done. We've done a, a pretty good job getting out of the community, getting the word out in my estimation.
For the ad hoc committee, we, we looked at some different options to jointly fund this multi, many bites of mini apples. So if we looked at the four cent gas tax, all, all trying to generate two point five million dollars a year. So if we did a four cent gas ta- four cent gas tax on the thirteen million gallons a year that we sell, we would need to have one point three million in street utility fee. Option two would be a six cents with a one million dollar street utility fee. Eight cent gas tax, that's would generate, would need seven point, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, so on and so forth. The ad hoc committee looked at those alternatives. We decided, uh, there wasn't a resolution on what the target number would be to shoot for, of the, of which of the street utility fee numbers to look at. That's something we'll look to council to help us with, with the.
Clarification if I may?
Yes, sir.
Under your street utility fee, you have an amount in parentheses, what's that?
That would be the single-family resident.
Annual or, or monthly?
Monthly. And that was under the, one of the options we'll talk about here in a minute. The fifty-fifty split. That's one of the recommendations from ad hoc that's going to be revised. Oh, you did? So what we have is a, the next page, fourteen, shows what the draft sample bills would be for various, for, for a handful of uses within the city. So on top is a single-family residential. Uh, start at the very top bar, I guess, the, uh, the top column. We ran t- six different scenarios, funding scenarios. We looked at three scenarios to raise a million dollars with the street utility fee and three scenarios to raise one point three million dollars for the street utility fee. Each of those fees was broken down between residents and businesses. Uh, there's three different models that we fought, we looked at, um, that would distribute the load of the cost between residents and businesses. Thirty-five percent of the trips generated in the city come from residents. The rest of the sixty-five percent of the trips are generated from businesses and non-residential uses. Uh, the fifty-fifty split takes our number of roads, miles of roads, and just says straight across that we're going to split the cost of the roads fifty-fifty between business and citizens. And then the sixty-five percent residential share is looking at and saying, maybe the residents should pay for a hundred percent of the res- the local roads and businesses pick up arterials and collectors. So that's why we looked at the three different models. Ad hoc committee looked at that and said, it makes more sense for us to go with the thirty-five percent because the residents are only generating thirty-five percent of the fee, of the trips. So under that scenario, for the million-dollar scenario one, your single-family home would drop to four dollars and sixteen cents. Multifamily would be slightly less than that, mobile homes would be slightly less than that based on the ITE manual for trip rates. A bookstore, fifty-seven dollars a month, a golf course, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars a month. Uh, that's one of those weird ones where they're kind of that group six of special ones. It's not based on square footage, it's based on the number of holes that they have. Same with gas stations, that's another weird one. It's not based on the square footage of the gas stations, it's based on the number of service positions. So you can see a fourteen-position gas station under scenario one would be four hundred and nineteen dollars a month. And then the school.
I'm sorry, could you tell me where are you?
Page fourteen.
Thank you.
And this column. And then the school district. This is the public school district, we also have the private school dis- the private schools that are calculated separately. And the university and the community college are all their own different, but they're all based on students, student counts.
So tell me, what is the difference?
Between.
School, school district is all lumped together or do you have different rate? I misunderstood or?
There's a, there's a different rate for private schools, a different rate for the university, George Fox, and a different rate for, per student, uh, for PCC. We just give a handful of rates of, of these. How many different classes? There's six classes and they fit in a different buckets.
And let me note that the school district number is for the entire school district, it's not just one school. So that's all of Newburgh's school district within, within Newburgh.
Can I, is that twelve months out of the year?
Yes.
Okay.
But that gets us to some of our questions in the RCA tonight.
Thirty-six thousand.
So from the ad hoc committee, the takeaways that we have? Takeaways from the ad hoc committee and from the public open house. Citizens feel Newburgh Road should be maintained better. Uh, we've heard it in two thousand, two thousand thirteen and again in our open houses in the ad hoc committee. Pavement conditions in Newburgh are deteriorating and will continue to get worse, proven out by our models and the studies we've been doing. As with everything else, costs more in the future, the more you kick it down the road. The increasing future cost of not spending more money, more annual on pavement is not fully understood by the general public. And that's, it's really hard to see that downward curve of, of pavement until you've lived in, or ad hoc committees lived it for four meetings and I think they finally, they, they understood it at the end. It was a, a steep learning curve for them to catch up. And lastly, there's no single revenue source that can cover the amount of money we need to raise to maintain our pavement. So the recommendation, as we look at a transportation utility fee from the ad hoc committee, is the thirty-five percent cost responsibility to the residents, residential homes. Look at ways to incorporate fee waivers, um, for low income. We've seen that successfully done in cities like Pendleton. Tigard, I believe, has a low-income waiver program for their street utility fee. Include some, some other fun, uh, some caveats in the clause and, and the, in the ordinance, street utility ordinance, that as more funding becomes available from the state level, from wherever we, uh, other money might generate, be generated for street maintenance, that it would offset the street utility fee. Gas tax withstanding, if we do a local gas tax. And then in the RCA, there's a couple others that we threw on to talk about, which would be the, uh, a phase-in approach where we do a, build this slowly over three, four years. A sunset or a rate adjustment clause, so in ten years, we're targeting ten years to have our PCI maintained. Instead of slipping, we've built it. At the end of ten years, the funding required to maintain that PCI would reduce. Don't know what that number is yet, we'll see how the pavement reacts. Pavement's a very modeled system, so it takes different loads. So ten years, we'll have a really strong idea of what are pavements and how it's reacting. An in- interesting, intriguing option came from the city of Pendleton again, uh, with a funding prioritization clause, where they say, we know we're not going to touch, if you, if you go by the engineers in the room, they're going to tell you, 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 you address your, your best roads first and push their life out as far as you can for as cheap as you can and pick up the, the, the other roads as you go down the hill and, and address those. Pendleton said, well, it's not really fair to do it that way because all the citizens are paying into this bucket. We have, like Newburgh has, pockets of really good roads and then, and over in the Greens and North Newburgh and some medium-level roads and the older, newer, older town there and some not-so-great roads down here in one, districts one and three, uh, just because of the age. What Pendleton came to the table and said, why don't we take seventy percent of our money, do it like the engineers want to do, and thirty percent do it and address our worst roads without thirty percent of the funding? So that's an option that's out there.
How did that improve CPI? That seventy?
PCI, yes.
PCI, how did, how did that affect?
It prolonged their program. But it did allocate the money more around the city and addressing the worst roads.
Did they get a better score or a worse score over that period of time?
They built it into their program, so instead of a ten-year program, they knew it would be a fourteen-year program. So they ended up at the same spot, it just took a little longer to get there. Uh, the other is the funding allocation clause, so that's what we talked about, the thirty-five, fifty, sixty-five percent. Uh, ad hoc is a recommendation, it's the thirty-five. And then we'll talk about caps on, caps within each class. So we look at a school district and say, in, in, in that class, maybe we cap them at a thousand dollars a month. Or in, just in number five, which is a really high generator, the, the coffee, coffee stations, fast food, whatnot, those are really high-traffic generators, we instituted a cap within each class. So those are all recommendations from the ad hoc for the, for council to consider. We don't know what those numbers are yet.
Hold on. When you cap, how does that cannibalize your fund or how does that, uh, how does that destroy capital that you have to use to fix roads? When, when you, when you give too many waivers, when you cap things off or whatever? Are you doing yourself a favor or are you injuring yourself?
It can be done one of two ways. Uh, with the caps, if you institute a cap, you can, it would adjust your target down. So instead of generating one point three million dollars and maybe it generates one point one or some number less than that. Alternatively, you redistribute the model and say, oh, our target is our target and we're going to cap within these classes and you rerun the model to generate that. And so your single-family number goes up and each of the other remaining numbers that haven't been capped. been capped pick up that load.
Follow on? You're talking about capping, was there any discussion on an inflation escalator?
The inflation is built into the model, so we know that a two-point-five million dollars a year are costs for doing business in year ten is less than the cost of year one.
Say that again?
The, the cost of inflation is built into our pavement model and our costing model, so we know that the cost to build something today is going to, what the, the miles that we can pave today is going to be less than the miles that we built, that we paved and is more than we can pave in twenty twenty.
I appreciate that. In the revenue model that you're coming up with, is there a inflation escalator in that?
Not at this point.
Thank you.
Oh, you're talking indexing the rates that we charge?
Thank you.
Yep, that was not considered.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
So, if by some sort of magic, the legislature passes a robust transportation package next session, and we see an influx of cash for road maintenance, under, we could put a clause in this that would say that whatever additional money we get from the state, we would reduce the street maintenance fee. Is that correct?
The target that we're going for.
Yeah, so, you know, you start out at four dollars and seventy-three cents, we get a bunch of money from the state, that could reduce down to four dollars or four fifty or whatever sliding scale that would be depending on the, the revenue we got from the state.
Correct.
Okay, great.
So I get the wrap-up slide here, it's consequences, and I, I think everyone knows that without additional funding, we're going to keep sliding, and we've already slid in the last couple of years. We're expected in, at twenty twenty-two to have a pavement condition index of sixty-one and be twenty-one million dollars behind at that point. So, you know, we need to get going sooner than later. And then just think about some other things, you know, that regular plan maintenance of, of the street pavement system decreases our long-term pavement maintenance costs once we get caught up, and, and hopefully the fee can somewhat sunset or, or portion, it could go away. It also reduces vehicle maintenance costs. The cars get beat up on bad, bad roads. It, it will increase property values also. Having new, newer paved streets should assist in, in property values, which could assist in, in demographics also of neighborhoods. It makes people more mobile, more safe, and makes a more livable community for everyone. So that's it of our presentation. That we are open for questions right now, and then we can also go over some of the motions that we're suggesting that council looks at.
Before we get into that, we do have some people that would like to testify.
Yes. Any further questions?
Yeah, I do. You have in your, this is just a sample, but you, you have more detailed on the breakdown, single-family bookstore, golf course, gas station. You have one that is more detailed than that?
Mr. Mayor, I've spent overnight going through every business and, and non-residential use in the city, modeling their square footage. I've got a spreadsheet that's eight hundred lines long, so we can tell you precisely what-
So we have residences, we have for-profit, and they have nonprofit?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, let's give some people a chance to talk to us for a minute. And I'm going to call on a, and I, again, I ask the people to keep their comments to no more than five minutes of Mark Greer. Is Mr. Mark Greer still with us?
Um, there was a gentleman who had to leave.
Mr. Jack Reardon, I know him's here. Not, not soon enough. Oh, that's right.
My name's Jack Reardon, I live in Newburgh. I'm a member of the ad hoc committee that's looked at this program. I've also, as some of you know, are on, but have been on the budget committee. And as only, I think, one of you knows, it's been over ten years. And I remember in that first meeting, ten years ago, that I was very, after just living in Newburgh for one year, very critical of the road maintenance in Newburgh. While there've been some improvements in the basic maintenance procedures in the last six years, especially as it relates to crack filling and sealing, which were not being done ten years ago. In fact, I'm having trouble wrapping my head around a million, two million, two and a half million, when I think we got thirty thousand dollars to do some crack filling eight years ago. So, just, you know, from that standpoint, I do have trouble with the numbers. There's no question that we need to do something about our road maintenance. It is going to go downhill. Therefore, the condition of the streets not receiving critical basic maintenance ten years ago have reached a point that will require much more costly repair measures. And those streets not presently receiving the basic maintenance due to limited funding will also require much more costly measures to repair them in the future years. I feel more funding is needed for road maintenance, and you should consider a maintenance fee. With that said, I'm concerned about the numbers that I'm hearing. And especially when they become onerous to our citizens and our businesses. Some of those business numbers get pretty big, as you can see. So, with, with that said, that we do need to consider some kind of a fee, I'm a proponent of putting more of the money, or taking more of the money from a gas tax rather than a fee. And I don't know what the scale should be, that's for you folks to decide, but I think the million-dollar number that we've been talking about, ad hoc committee, is too high. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Questions of Mr. Reardon?
My light was on to talk to staff, but I thought maybe I used up my time. I don't care.
Oh, all right. Thank you, Jack, appreciate it very much. E C Bell?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, E C Bell, Newburgh resident and member of, also the ad hoc street committee, or ad hoc, where were we, were we committee? Is that where we were?
Ad hoc.
We were ad hoc. Very, very, very fascinating and very useful, and appreciated immensely the, the amount of effort put into informing us that city and staff did. It was very helpful, and I certainly felt like I was better prepared to talk to people relating to it. Just a couple of comments. One, it, it's not going to get less onerous, and so again, I don't envy your position, yet nonetheless, it's going to have to be probably on your watch that this rather significant demand of our citizens is going to have to be made if we're going to maintain our, our roads at all. The two comments that I would bring, perhaps different than my fellow member on the committee. First, I do think that, we all know that, that there are signs that gas tax is not going to generate revenue, that, that we hope, whether it's a reduction in use of gas, fuel efficiency, that gas taxes are not producing what they have in the past. And so, there's probably not as much money there as one might hope. The other is, just as a parent who's had four children go through the Newburgh school system, I am concerned about revenue being taken from them. I know that that would require more from me probably, out of my house or various other ways, I know that money has to come from someplace. But for those who are low-income, we, we do, we've hardly heard tonight, fifty percent free and reduced lunch. Some statistics, at least a minimum of two hundred and fifty kids are homeless in the high school. We have a really difficult and struggling high school graduation rate for our public school. There are real needs in the school district, and certainly, they are going to need all the funds they have, so I would discourage using the school district as a source of funds and figuring out ways to spread that out. I'm not popular among people in my day job, I only work one day a week as a minister, but I would encourage that there are probably other sources that are not mentioned because sometimes we don't like to talk about that, but the churches are there. There are other places where these monies could be spread out that probably have been taken off the table in my mind, perhaps a little too quickly. So those are my comments. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve on that committee.
Thank you, E C, any questions or comments? Thank you for staying, appreciate it. And thank you, Jack, for taking the time to stay. All right, staff may come back, including Tony. This one goes to Jay, so what is it that you're looking for?
If you go to the R C A, there, or Karen, it's page nineteen of the PowerPoint also, that staff has put together two different motions. One, which is at the bottom of, of page nineteen, would just, to table the street utility, utility fee to another time. Or, the first one is just to provide us a direction on how to formulate a street utility fee ordinance that we'll bring back to you for consideration. You see, there's six different items we can talk about. We don't go into a lot of detail of those, but we could bring back a staff report with an ordinance, so we could work our way through one or more of the, the six various items and come up with full fee tables and that sort of thing for, for council to, to look at different rates.
Question, and this one, I believe, is of our city recorder. If we were to put a gas tax on the May ballot, when do we have to file?
You know, I'd have to look it up. I know I gave you information cards a few times ago.
I'm sorry, Karen?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have the exact date, but we looked at, the council would have to make that, we would be talking about the ballot title in February, in, to make the May ballot.
Thank you. Counselor Bacon? Counselor McKinney?
First of all, I say thank you, I, I see that you did take my comments to you to heart about, you know, districts one and three, eight dollars on the, on the bill is a lot of money, and then not fixing their streets is like kicking people in the teeth and they can't afford the car maintenance either. So I do appreciate the Pendleton six, sixty or seventy, thirty, because P C I does not mean anything to anyone except for maybe this group of people sitting in the room. They're looking at what pavement is in front of their house or in their neighborhoods that they drive over. So whether the number raises up or doesn't raise up means nothing to them. And the low-income, you know, I, I realize that puts the burden on to other people, but eight dollars is someone's gas money to get to work or someone's extra food. You know, it's, so I appreciate that because otherwise, there would be no chance of me ever being able to support this. So I'm glad that you heard me and I appreciate that, thanks.
Counselor McKinney? February's coming around pretty fast. I noticed on your table, nobody has a six percent or a, a six cent tax. Portland has ten, then there's one, one and a half, or whatever. How much time do we need to invest to get a six percent, or a six cent tax to be able to do that? Is there any statistical information regarding that?
I don't believe there is. What I can say is, it took Portland several years to get their ten cents. The city of Bend's just, gas tax measure just failed. City of Tigard has one on tomorrow, so, which is an increase to their gas tax, so we'll know tomorrow whether or not the city of Tigard is successful in passing an additional gas tax. You know, most of the time, it depends on the community and, and what the community feels is the need. So there's no statistic, just, can't say that now, statistical analysis about how much energy and time that takes.
Counselor Johnson, Counselor Woodruff?
Two questions. Number one, as far as economic development goes, how important are good streets to economic development?
I, I hope I can speak for Mr. Rux, is that good streets are very important to economic development. If the streets are falling apart, companies are not going to want to come here and/or expand because they can't get their goods in and out, they can't get their, their workers in and out, and those types of things. So it's very important to economic development.
Okay, and then-
Follow on?
Yeah, forget it, don't let us, again.
You got another one?
Uh, I guess this is a follow-on really to Stevens, but just back to the gas tax for a second. Is there any sort of idea or estimate on how to do public outreach on hopefully passing a gas tax?
So, and I'll jump in and somebody else can also jump in here. So, if, if, if the council decides to go forward with the gas tax, staff can provide facts and information of those types of things, but other folks would have to do really most of the public outreach because we, we can't do that. You know, part of the questions come up when you start to talk about the gas tax is, are you going to set, that you're going to do specific projects with gas tax? That has been something that's been successful for other agencies? Or are you going to say that you can spend the gas tax on certain pieces or elements of the project? That's one thing you can do with the street utility fee also. So part of that just depends on how the council wants to, to move forward with that. Again, are we saying the gas taxes just to move forward with the pavement maintenance purposes, or are we going to do, we're going to do Willamette Street, you know, with the money, or, or Elliott Road, or whatever the case may be? And that's part of a discussion or decision that the council overall will have to make. Obviously, we can provide input and, and information, but-
Counselor Johnson, Counselor McKinney?
So we could come up with a list of potential projects, year one, two, three, through however long, if we did a gas tax or even a street maintenance fee, we could develop a, a kind of a project list?
Yes, you could.
Okay.
Counselor McKinney?
Hi. A little deeper on that answer. The pavement system program that we utilize, that the city's utilized, it builds a history of knowledge of the, of, of how the roads are being maintained and how they're reacting to the maintenance and the long-term use. We've got one screenshot in time, the second time we do that analysis of all the same roads, we'll see how fast that curve is deteriorating. So we've put together a list of year one, two, three, four, five, with the caveat that, you know, maybe year five, the roads we had on there aren't behaving as badly as they're predicted to behave. So there's some variance in that, that list of further, further down the road that we get to predict what those roads are going to behave like.
So what I imply by that answer is that the methodology is a little bit focused on what roads need to be done where, and relate, rather than just a, a six cents and we'll use it anywhere. Is that what you were implying? That there is some focus involved on here?
Counselor McKinney, yes. So the, the, the model that was done that generated the two-point-five million dollars in maintaining what- So the model that was done that generated the $2.5 million in maintaining, what, the assumptions were where we were maintaining the PCI. So that's where we came up with the $2.5 million. And it has a list of projects or a list of treatments for every roadway that needs to happen in order to maintain that PCI and be at 78 at the end of 10 years. Certainly, the council can choose to, you know, if we are going with the gas tax or anything else, and we're going to pick these other projects to do, that assumption of maintaining that PCI has been put aside, and we're focusing on other issues. So that makes a difference, and we wouldn't necessarily see that same PCI at the end of 10 years.
Follow on, Mr. Mayor?
Follow on.
Is that, I appreciate that, Karen, in that, that's the way we're looking at it because we're dealing with the problem here. The public kind of has two classifications. They're either good or no good, you know? So are we going to deal with the no-good ones first, or, you know, that type of thing? Here's the question, my original question that I wanted to ask. Why are we only looking at scenario ones and not twos and threes to help mitigate the hemorrhage for, you know, school districts? I mean, it would go from a $3,000 a month bill. If it was scenario three, it would be a $1,647 bill, that type of thing. Is that, is it unreasonable to think that a person who could afford $4.16 a month couldn't afford $7.72 a month to make, you know, it's kind of tilted one way? But for some of the types of those 800 lines to where, you know, some of that monthly billing might be kind of onerous at that particular point in time, is that are we afraid to ask the single family to pay a little bit more so that the rest of the community doesn't suffer so severely?
Scenario one came out of the ad hoc committee recommendation. So that committee felt that that cost split between residential and non-residential because of the trips generated by each class of user was the most, I won't say, they struggled with the word. It wasn't fair, it wasn't equitable, but they thought it was the right thing to do at that stage in the game. They did understand also that the city council could choose a different split on that share. But where the ad hoc committee came down was scenario one. Well, I won't say that. They didn't say scenario one because it wasn't the $1 million target, it was the 35% share for residential.
Councilor Essen?
I think, I'm not so opposed to the higher gas tax rather than higher utility fees. But still, as I understand it, we're going to need both. And so, but then again, I think gas should cost $4 a gallon, even though we can't afford $4 a gallon and we stop driving so much. And I know that my mileage per year is about 2,000 miles, so the gas tax is not going to hit me. It's a choice that you drive that much. And I realize that, and the people that drive use the roads, so it makes sense. Now, I understand we have electrical vehicles, and this is, this whole scenario is going the other way, but I just thought I'd give you my approaches to have higher gas tax, and I think that's what Jack was saying. I think he's got a good idea.
Question, and this may be for you, or maybe for Joe, and maybe for our city recorder. We're looking at a gas tax, we're going to go with the electorate, and we just asked about that. Are you saying, or are you suggesting that the council unilaterally can institute a utility fee without asking for the concurrence of the electorate?
Mr. Mayor, yes. The city council could adopt an ordinance that sets a fee to be put on the municipal services bill without going to the, out to the public if they so choose.
Just like our public safety?
Just like the public safety fee or any of the other fees that have been put on. You know, one other option that has come up, I'm not sure if it was in the RCA, one of the things that we've talked about is if we wanted to do a phase-in or some kind of inflationary, certainly this is another instance, if the council so chose, that it could go to the citizen rate review committee along with the water rates and the wastewater rates on the, by every two-year cycle, that those rates go to that committee also.
Councilor Bacon?
What's important to me is that if we start collecting the money, that we are able to show that we're doing what we're saying we're going to do with it. So I can see how a phased-in approach would be a good way of doing that, but then again, it adds further damage down the road. So I'm a little torn on my, but I think we need to build some trust that we will actually follow through.
Councilor Corey?
Yeah, and I think the only way to do that is to name the projects, that the gas tax is going toward, that the utility fee is going toward. I think that's extremely important for the citizens because I don't see a large gas tax passing at all without explanation. This is the projects that that is actually going to. And I think the phased-in approach would just, again, delay things, and that's, I think, we as a council in the past have agreed that we need to do something now. We need to get going, we need to do what we can. So the phased-in approach doesn't work for me. The rest of the council may be totally in disagreement now, I don't know, but that's the way I feel. However, the low-income waivers make sense, the sunset rate adjustment certainly makes sense, and the funding allocation clause certainly makes sense. The cap is, eh, I'm not so much on the cap thing, so. And I agree, maybe we could have the residential pay a little more like Councilor McKinney was saying. I think I agree with that. You know, possibility to lower what the hospital maybe pays or what the school districts pay, understanding that, you know, they're strapped as well. And again, it's like working with CPRD, we would try to work with, you know, those groups as well.
Councilor Johnson?
We did take $1.25 off the municipal service statement, didn't we, when we switched over to TB FNR? It was roughly, yeah, about 50? Okay. Sorry, forgot the quarter. Follow on, it's getting late, so I guess I'm going to throw a motion out here if that's appropriate, Mr. Mayor?
Do you have that?
And just to see where we are, okay?
They can always gavel you down.
You can, just cock me on the head. My wife does all the time.
Might die for lack of a second.
Yeah, I might. So I would move that we direct staff to continue moving forward with the ordinance for a street utility fee with the following options. Bring in some language about low-income waivers, a sunset rate adjustment clause, funding prioritization clause, funding allocation clause, and a cap or a monthly fee with a starting point of where the committee was. And I'll leave it at that.
I'll second it because it sounds like almost everything.
It has been moved and seconded. The council directing staff to prepare an ordinance for a street utility fee with the following options: low-income waivers, sunset, funding prioritization clause, funding allocation clause, and a cap. No phase-in in this motion.
And then, can I talk to the motion, please?
You may.
Thank you, sir. I don't like the low amount that the committee recommended because I figure if we have low-income waivers, people who are low-income aren't going to pay it regardless. So my feeling is that instead of making this a fee and a gas tax that lasts 10 years or 15 years because we've kind of given people a break and started low because we're concerned that we rip the Band-Aid off, get the problem solved, get to a point where we know exactly how much year-to-year our maintenance is going to cost on our streets, fund it, and fix it, like you guys have done with the water and the sewer and the other issues. This isn't, this is a continuation of the problem that this council has had to deal with for the last, what, five, six, seven years? Where maintenance and money was not, rates weren't adjusted, and now here you are. And, you know, it's easy to forget streets, but we heard it from our city administrator candidates who said they drove all the streets in Newburgh, and boy, you guys have some rough areas. I remember that. You don't think that if we have some industrial property, or we have some redevelopment, or we have some downtown Newburgh redevelopment that maybe wants to happen, and they drive two blocks that way, they're not going to see what we all see when we drive around town? I mean, to me, that's the scariest part, is that we could be losing out on opportunities because of the lack of foresight to take care of these things. And nobody on this council, it's none of our fault, it's just that it's hard to ask people for money. And I really would hope that we would go out and tell people, look, these are the projects we're going to do. We're not going to be blowing it on, you know, whatever. I would hope this, we could go out and say, year one and year two especially, we need to say the projects we're going to do, and then we need to do them. And I think that's the only way we can get some credibility. If we phase it in, then we started a buck, we're not going to have any money to do any projects. And so we're going to take all the heat for getting a fee, and then we're not going to be able to anything to show for it, and everybody's going to be completely mad when we try to increase it. So, you know, I would love to see what staff comes back with, you know, I would hope that it would be something that, like a menu that we can all sit down and kind of negotiate and figure it out. And also, I'd like to see a robust public information and a commitment from, you know, people on the committee who were involved, people here, hopefully our pals at CPRD, to explain to the citizens that, look, you know, we want to make this place a great place, but if you need an SUV to get to the pool, you know, is that really the type of community we want, where it's a gravel road to get to the pool, or it's a gravel road to get to Rennie? So, anyway, that's my state.
Councilor McKinney?
I like the idea of ripping the Band-Aid off. I'm not especially excited about the motion as it exists now because it grants too many opportunities to cannibalize the fund that you're trying to build, if we give this exception, if we give that exception, if we do some of the others. Are you suggesting a scenario one or something higher than a scenario one?
I would love to see, I try not to go...
Councilor Johnson?
I'm sorry. It's late, I'm sorry. And of course, I have the wrong...
It's right there.
What's this one?
Page 14, right here.
Oh. Yeah, I'm more interested in like scenario three, two or three, you know? Well, you know, hey, I'll take what I can get. So if I can get four votes with scenario three, I'm there. But I also want to be sensitive to District One and District Three, and the needs we have there, and also the economic issues we have out there. You know, I sat, the thing that concerns me most about this, I'm sorry, I'm ranting, but I went to the affordable housing meeting that Rick Rogers put on, and I saw something that surprised me. It said the starting wage of a teacher that works at New Rouge School District is around $36,000.
37.
So that, I'm not, that's no benefits or anything else, it's just what they get, what they pay. And we're looking at charging them basically one teacher a year if we do the scenario the committee recommended. It would cost the school district a teacher a year to fund roads. And so I'm with you guys. I kind of would like to see what staff comes back with, because they obviously talk to us more than we talk to each other, and see what they craft, and then we can sit down and hammer it out, but I don't really think 10:45 at night...
Let's get the mic back to Councilor McKinney. He had it first.
I'm interested in supporting a motion that isn't watered down, that doesn't cannibalize itself, that asks more of a scenario three type of question. I'm really in favor of asking a million dollars, a million point $3 a year and getting something to where we can significantly do something. I've asked for this since 2009 to where we can get here, but I'm not interested in a watered-down motion. I am interested in yanking the Band-Aid off, but I'm more interested in getting things done. I'm interested in seeing an RCA that creates a substantial amount of money so that when Denise goes to her constituents, they can see that the road is improved in front of their house. Now, with districts one and three, there's going to be some problems there, no matter, you know, what we're going to deal with, but that shouldn't, that shouldn't change our methodology to change, to make some significant changes here. And then we deal with the hardship cases as they come along. But if you can assure me that your motion isn't a watered-down motion without a bunch of exceptions, I'm interested in passing this tonight. Let's yank the Band-Aid off, let's, I want to see an RCA that comes back to us that makes a significant improvement in the roads, because we only have two classifications. They're either good, or they're no good.
Councilor Essen? Councilor Corey?
I like your way of putting it. I just hope we're not ripping the stitches out, because for some people, especially in one and three, I can tell you, they're not making a lot of money. But this brings up the whole scenario, as I recall, this first came up with, well, were we going to pass a bond issue? I guess that's out of the question, that we decided we're not going that way. Of course, that, again, is votes, and...
This is something we need now.
Well, this is talking, it would be May, right? That's when they would be doing it. And then what was the other option?
Clarification on that, please. May for a gas tax.
Right.
But you could do a utility fee tomorrow, for that matter.
Oh, the utility fees you can do, yes.
Do by council action.
Right, that can be done right away.
You bear that responsibility, but it can be done by council action.
Right.
Go ahead, finish up.
Oh, then what I'm saying is, well, I guess what you're saying, what you're saying is we can just pass it and take the heat, which is what you mean by ripping the Bass.
We want to stick to, as close as we can to the motion, please. Councilor Corey?
No, I'm, I'm...
I have a question, and it may generate an amendment, I don't know. You have in here, we did not put in a phased-in approach. But I'm going to throw something out. How about a phased-out approach? Councilor McKinney is saying, let's take the Band-Aid off and go out for it. Instead of pussy-pooting around, let's make it a 10% gas, 10-cent gas, and after five years, then it goes to 4 cents. That's whatever.
It's going to be hard enough to pass a four or six.
Yeah, that's all right, but sometimes you're phased, this is where you say, I'm dedicating, and you can expect this for this amount of time. So it's just a thought. You don't have to adopt it. I have no pride of authorship, but I think it needs to be discussed. Councilor Johnson, then Councilor Essen?
My, I believe the sunset rate adjust clause, number three, that's in there. You know, as we get, as we get to a point where we need less money, we would reduce everything.
Thank you.
Whether that's a gas tax, whether that's a fee, we can sit up here and say, we don't have to levy the entire, that's a good question for staff. If we have a 10-cent gas tax, and we come back and we realize we're making more money to keep the PCI, we would be heading toward, you know, Wilsonville Roads. Can we reduce that? Can we reduce that gas tax whenever we want, or do we have to go back to the voters and pass a lower gas tax?
Know the answer to that.
Okay. That'd be interesting to know, too, when...
Councilor Essen?
I like it. I like the concept that...
Well, I think, I think it was answered, and I appreciate it, that's why I wanted it brought up, is if we understand that in a rate sunset adjustment thing, you can, you could go maybe for a little bit more, and you could be looking at that, you can give us that scenario, then I think we've accomplished that. It's malleable, adjustable, evaluated. Right, whatever. Is there a second to the motion? No, the motion's been seconded already. So the question's been called for, which is to have council direct staff to prepare an ordinance for a street utility fee with the following options: low-income waivers, sunset rate adjustment clause, funding prioritization clause, funding allocation clause, and cap of monthly fee. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Question's been called for. Are you ready? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. You've got your direction.
Are you awake, Matt? Ready for...
Is it inappropriate to say I will be here? All right.
I don't think you can do anything about the gas tax, but you can.
Because you can make that fee. The gas tax needs to be considered, but it needs to be run by a professional...
Well, all I'm saying is, the gas taxes, the gas...
Is there anything further to come before the council at this time? Are there any questions on the rate, on the financial reports? I don't hear any. I don't hear anything else, either.
Motion to adjourn?
Ah! It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned.